Recording in progress.
I'm going to go ahead and call us to order. This is a workshop, so for those who have attendees before, these tend to be a little bit more open discussion, a chance for the public to talk and for us to talk, still within confines of timeframes. So I think presenters as best you can try to keep it to around 20, you know, 15, 20 if you can. And then because that we want to then save time for questions, you know, from the public and a little dialogue there. And we've got quite a full docket today. So our first, the only deletion as such is already stricken under C six is the African American Heritage Commission is not going to provide our update today. But other than that, we'll maintain the same order. And so I'll continue to filibuster. So councilperson Marasco can, she doesn't have to break into a sprint. And so with that being said, first is C one, which is an update from our planning commission. They have had a subcommittee looking at home occupation. And so Kevin, are you prepared to take us through that?
I am.
All right. Going to introduce yourself and take us, take us through.
Yeah, Kevin Keane of the City Planning Commission. So we want to walk you through this proposed home occupation ordinance that we took a look at at our first planning commission meeting last week, take you step by step, give you our reasoning for what we did, and answer any questions you may have. So go to the next slide. So why the update? So we wanted to, we were given a mandate or a request from city council and the mayor to consider changes that reflect these new realities of home-based businesses. And we wanted, when we went into it, we wanted to repurpose that existing ordinance so that balance the right between residents to conduct business in our homes and the need to maintain the character of the existing neighborhoods, which is really the key to us throughout this process is we wanted to look at maintaining the character, the existing character of the neighborhoods. And we also, you can read the slide, but recognizing the changing nature of home-based businesses, as you know, since, since the pandemic especially, the nature of home-based businesses has changed throughout the country. And we wanted to make sure our ordinance reflected those changes. And then we used, in our process, we used through with Janelle's help, stuff, information from the American Planning Association, and then she did an extensive research from existing ordinances from municipalities across the country. So we looked at those as well. So the APA guiding principles are municipalities need to encourage economic growth and refrain from putting overly restricted barriers. Okay. So if you looked at our original ordinance, for instance, the original ordinance that's on the books, it goes extensively to a list of what, what businesses are allowed, what businesses aren't allowed. Okay. And the APA does not recommend that you give a list of allowable businesses. They recommend that you basically create the criteria for which businesses can fit into. So we encourage entrepreneurship, particularly among young people and traditionally of disadvantaged, disadvantaged communities. And we want to allow occupants to engage in occupations incidental to the principal use of the home. And when we, when we set the guidelines for what kind of renovations, for instance, that could be done to a home to accommodate home-based businesses, the principle was these changes had to be incidental to the principal use of the home. So the ordinance details, so it's in front of you, it's been updated, right, Janelle? So, so you can go through it, but it does include, it, it looks to eliminate the list of allowable businesses as we stated, okay. And it uses, and this is based on three, again, the APA recommendations, a three-tiered system, which is what are the no impact, what are the definition of no impact, home-based businesses, low impact, and potential impact. Okay. And then, and then you take those tiers after you define them, and determine which tiers are allowed in the various city zones. Okay. And so we, if we went through this, tiers A and B, which are the least impactful, are allowed in all residential zones within the city as our recommendation. Tier C, which is the potential impact, is not allowed in those dense, more dense communities. Okay. So we not allowed in R five, R three, town center historic, and marine historic. So it's important to understand where, where the differences are between the two, made two top tiers. Okay. Tier B has no more than two city and resident, not two non-resident employees. Tier C, no more than four. Okay, that's a high intensity one. Tier B, there's no requirement for off-street parking. And tier three, off-street parking is required, which is another real key factor describing the differences. Tier B, no commercial vehicles are allowed. Tier C, limited commercial vehicles. And in tier B, no outdoor storage. Tier C, outdoor storage allowed with the appropriate fencing. So additional details, there's, we, we wanted to create an administrative appeal process. Okay. So the usual recommendations is to go to the board of adjustments for zoning challenges. That's for technical challenges. We wanted to create an administrative appeal process for the neighborhoods themselves. So it's automatic for tier C. So you can automatically go into this process in tier C. And it's, it's only in tier B when animals are involved. Okay. So what, what the administrative process does, it notifies nearby residents. The applicant has to go out and notify nearby residents of the business and the details of business. If objections are raised, then you meet with the city planner to resolve the outstanding issue. So we wanted a process that's outside of the formal conditional use process. We wanted to have a process where we can, with conversation hopefully, and getting them in the same room together, you could remedy any issues, outstanding issues with neighbors. So, but if that doesn't work, then it goes for the planning commission, if they, if they follow, gets from conditional use application, it goes to the planning commission, the mayor and city council for that resolution ultimately. So as part of this, we went through the definition of uses that was in the existing ordinances. And you know, to Janelle's point that she always raises that these zoning ordinances need to be updated. If you go into detail of the definitions in the zoning ordinance, it's clear that the language needs to be updated, not just in this case, but throughout. So anyway, as part of that, we went through, we amended the kennel definition to eliminate pet grooming and training. It wasn't, with research, we found that pet grooming wasn't included in the definition of kennel, in any area we could find, any other city ordinance we could find. So, and we also eliminated during discussion the other night, it was recommended we eliminate training from the definition of kennel, pet training. So once we removed those, we had to redefine them. So we defined what pet grooming is in the ordinance, animal training is defined. And then we also removed the restrictions on medical offices, okay, which were, in the original ordinance, weren't allowed anywhere in the city. So we took that out because these are, we think they're smaller offices, and redefine that as well.
Psychologists.
Right. So answer any questions you may have?
I have a question with the appeal process for the neighbors. So let's assume that the neighbors in present day are good and okay with it. New neighbors move in, aren't okay with it. How does that work?
Yeah, that came up. Well, once the, once the, it's allowed, okay. So, you know, once it's allowed, the new neighbors should have an understanding of what actually is around them. Okay. But so there is no really appeal process in that case. And Janelle, you can get, tell me if I'm wrong here. But there is no real appeal process once the, once the business has been allowed. Now, but a business can move up through tiers, tiers. So for instance, if you're in tier two, and you, your business starts to go very well, you want to move up to a more, you know, it becomes more activity, you need a truck, for instance, whatever it may be, if it's allowed in that zone. Then, once they move up into tier three, then they have to put out notices to neighbors in the process then begin to get.
I had a couple of questions. First of all, I really applaud this approach. I think it's, it's innovative, and it also puts less burden. None of us can predict the future of businesses. And so the current one is a long list, and some of those businesses don't really exist, and, and we're not anticipating the future. And I think COVID, as you said, Kevin, changed some of that. So I love the structure. I think the structure is good. I also think it really does encourage entrepreneurs, and hopefully a more youthful business owners who are coming into, into Lewis. So I love the overall approach. A few questions I had about the full-time employees. Sometimes, you know, an FTE could be for part-time to get to, to full-time. So what I was wondering is, did the committee look at the definition of full-time, meaning it could, it's not necessarily bodies, it's 40 hours a week? And my other one related to that is episodic. So you could have a cake baking industry, okay, business. But right before the wedding, all hands on deck, if any of us have known if their daughters have gotten married. So you're going to need a few more extra people there. I assume there would be that sensibility in terms of episodic, or even very short-term seasonal.
Yeah, we, again, we don't want to be too restrictive, Amy. So we didn't want to put, these are, you shouldn't look at these as strict limits as far as those episodic stuff. I mean, there's going to be instances where people come and go from a, a business. And so we don't, we can be flexible that way. Okay. It's, it's when they actually, it's, those numbers are used to, to put limits on it in the event there's a challenge, for instance, whatever it may be. Okay. But there's going to be episodes where people, even in the smaller tier business, in the non-intrusive businesses, where people are going to come and go, that, that are going to be episodic to your point, right? And we looked at, when we looked at FTEs, we just sort of looked at the overall scope of it. We didn't say 40 hours per week, whatever it may be.
It just gives a sense of magnitude of involvement, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And my last question is really, did you look at, I mean, I know that's related to zoning, but there are different building structures. So a shared wall townhouse approach has different implications for the neighbors than someone who is in single family. So I just wondered how the, how the subcommittee looked at the actual, is there, is there a change in any way if you have that situation?
Now, so, so that's what we, that's what we took in consideration. We talked about which, whether or not the high use, the high tier C should be in a higher density. We looked at the intrusion in the neighborhood. Okay. And we, and we realized there are shared walls in, in higher density neighborhoods. And so in order, and that, that, that's why tier C is not allowed within the, one of those higher density zones.
Gotcha.
As a reflection of that, that, that issue. But, you know, so, so, but a difference from neighborhood to neighborhood, as you say, okay. And so when a conditional use is applied for, for instance, and it comes before city council, you'll use the conditional use ordinance to judge whether or not it's appropriate for that particular neighborhood at that particular time.
Okay. Thank you.
If you look into, I know there are some communities where they really looked into the idea of transfer between connected units. And they actually require the units to be pressurized so that air doesn't flow from one unit to the other. Has to do with smoking, with a whole lot of activities that take place in some of these townhomes. Was that looked into?
No, we didn't go into those kind of details, Joe. We didn't, we didn't dig into the building codes or anything like that. That's relatively reflective of building codes and standards within the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, please.
Just, I have a quick question on the prohibited home occupations. Number F, rooming and boarding houses is prohibited. How do you, I'm just curious, because I'm curious about clarification, because that could be, to me, that could.
Airbnb.
Airbnb or.
Sure, sir. I was going to ask Janelle the same question. What differentiates?
It's defined within the ordinance. Okay. So rooming and boarding is already one of the existing definitions within the ordinance itself. Okay. And again, if it's, you may want to go back and look at it. Okay. But we didn't recommend it as part of this particular ordinance. Okay. But again, going back to Janelle's pushing us to look and, and update the language in these ordinances.
And I have similar, since we're on here, I have a couple of questions here. For example, nursing care facilities, ought we might look at having an ability to have someone host adult daycare, for example?
Well, adult daycare, there is an exception for adult daycare in the ordinance.
How is that different?
It's defined differently within the ordinance itself.
And then similarly, I had a question, you know, if we're talking about modernizing things, and we're having a hard time getting different types of, you know, doctors and such, why, what about medical clinics and dental clinics? If someone wants to have a clinic in their home, isn't that for them to have the authority to say, yeah, sure, your house is safe enough to have a dentist office?
In the original ordinance, Andrew, the, that was even broader. Medical offices weren't allowed. Okay. Medical dental offices weren't allowed in your homes. And so we looked at it and said, well, they're not as overly useful. I mean, let's just eliminate those. So allow you can, you can have mental and dental facilities within your homes. Okay. But the clinics were thought to be bigger and larger and more intrusive. Okay. By clinics, and again, there are definitions within the ordinance that define what a clinic is, that's composed of what a medical office is.
So you're not going to say if someone, primary care wants to come and say, I want to open up, then I have a big enough house. You're not going to deny that?
Not if it falls into the medical office. So the city currently has a definition of medical clinic. And it's for, where you're admitted for examination and treatment on an outpatient basis. But like if, like a chiropractor, when I was growing up, the chiropractor, it was one guy, he just wanted, he, he ran his chiropractor service out of his house. That's a medical office. So it's like, okay, it might be me and one person, but I'm not setting up, I'm not going to, you know, my medical practice where, you know, I can go downstairs and get, you know, the x-ray, or, you know, all of that. It's really, I'm just going to have the office there. I'm going to treat people, you know, prescribe the prescriptions, and they go home.
The other question also is manufacturing. So like, what about, like, what do you call these? Like a home crafts person who's selling on?
Yeah, that came up.
You know, I mean.
Yeah. They are going to fall into the, most likely, the no impact, because really, because I have friends who do it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. And you don't know that, what they do. They make, they paint their stuff at home, and then they go to craft fairs. There's nobody coming to their house. They're making it. They're painting at their house, or they're creating. And then they take their, their, their goods to craft fairs and other facilities to sell. Or they're selling on, you know, a website. But then, all you're going to have is you're, you've got UPS or whomever dropping off and picking up, which is like.
That's what I'm saying. They don't fall then into manufacturing? You're not making something?
No. And the definition of manufacturing, because we.
It's very intense.
It's very.
It's like oil, oil uses and heavy manufacturing. It's very intensive stuff. I mean, the definitions are pretty clear that way.
Mechanical or chemical transformation.
Yeah.
That uses lubricating oils, plastics, resins, or liquors.
Yeah.
And so that could be one of those things that we also need to.
Liquors later in the, when you're done manufacturing. Yeah.
After you've done the crafts.
But if we're being critical of the existing code, and I understand that we need to be critical of our existing code, that definition of manufacturing could be expanded if and when we get around to doing that, considering the definitions, correct?
Absolutely. You can definitely look at that. And then.
Currently, it's, it's, has, is based on petroleum byproducts, right? But doesn't mean in the future manufacturing would also only be defined that way.
Correct. And then that's where you'd then go. It's like, okay, that's when you, if you amend a definition, you actually have to look throughout the code.
Right.
And see where that definition fits, to see if you have to update another section of code.
So maybe one of the, one of the things, and we're having to do this on the resiliency fund, very similar, people are, oh, yes, I'm, I'm for resiliency. What does that mean? And so we had to, in our policy statement, we'll be discussing, list sample projects. So I'm wondering, not as part of ordinance, because you don't want to bog down your ordinance, but it may be before there's a public hearing, to just clarify things like, oh, a consulting practice is no impact. Or, in other words, if you can translate for non-code people, which should be 99% of our population, into actual businesses. So they go, oh, I get it. It's the doctor's office, but not the, just as you were saying, Mayor.
Yeah.
I think that will help in education on this ordinance. Absolutely.
Question I have for you, Kevin, is what's, what is your recommendation as next steps? Have you gone planning, like, is this obviously not like in an ordinance format? Do you, do you?
Well, we wanted to get your feedback.
Okay.
Okay. So as part of, we had some broad discussions on it the other night. I don't know if you saw the meeting. It was a broad discussions about it. So there is some, there is some disagreement you'll hear today regarding whether or not we're being too permissive, whether or not we're opening up the doors for allowing too many businesses in the, into the neighborhoods. And again, we go, we went back to the APA recommendations that you don't want to be too restrictive. Okay. Because that can have a real negative impact on entrepreneurship, youth, youth businesses, whatever it may be. And so we don't want to be too restrictive. At the same time, there is some questions whether or not the number, if you look at in tier two and tier three, two, two employees, not in tier, tier B, and four in tier, you can have four in tier C. There was some disagreement whether or not that's, that we should allow that many four. The thought on the subcommittee was, well, again, going to the idea that there are, there are some occupations where, like accounting, for instance, is heavy in the tax season. Okay. So you're going to allow more, more accountants into your home perhaps during the tax season. So that should have allowed, that's why four we thought was a reasonable number. Now, you may look at that, and so we're asking for your input on this. You may look at that and say, well, you know what, four is too big. Or it, it should be, you know, two, or whatever it may be. So we're looking for some recommendations, if you have them, regarding those specific, specific aspects of tiers.
Let's talk about that. Excuse me, Kevin. If in fact, in the original description here of the regulations for home occupations, I think you described, well, not I think, in two A, you described not more than 10% or 300 square.
Yeah.
How does a business with four employees, counting the resident, that'd be five people, work in a 300 square foot area? Is that, does that meet our, our code? Does that meet the building code?
So the 10% and 300 square feet numbers come from tax code. Okay. I mean, there's an, there are IRS codes regarding that, that particular number.
Right.
And so, and it's incorporated within other parts of the zoning code as well. And so those numbers, okay, we didn't, that, those numbers are actually extracted from existing codes.
I understand, but right now, they are in your, in this proposed language. That's why.
So typically, if you're going to get to like more than, you're going to get to the four, think of like, it's a home-based contractor, and they've got four employees coming to the site.
That's right.
They meet, and then they go.
But they could, they could meet and work there, too. There's nothing, when that accountant practice expands during tax season and has four additional accountants coming in to work there, that, that's impactful. And there does, there is an expectation that it's going to be a safe work environment for those five, five, the employer and his four employees.
So would you be recommending an increase in that square footage?
No, I'm just asking, you know, has that been discussed? I, I'm not.
Well, we discussed it. We discussed the 300 square foot number. Again, it reflects, A, existing code within the city of Lewis.
I understand.
And B, it reflects, if you go over the 10% and the 300 square foot standard, you jump up into 88 issues. And so, you know.
It's a way of restricting what types.
88 IRS. So.
And it also gets into, it starts looking at, you start turning the house into a commercial use.
Yeah.
Once you go over that, that limit.
So.
But are you also.
But the intent is to keep it as a home occupation. Now, again, maybe one of those, those people, it's, I'm out in the field all day, but they employ four people. Maybe they're not always at the house. But that's something, you know, that definitely can be discussed. I'm not aware of a space requirement for per person at a desk, because I've worked at many places where you have just a touchdown spot, where somebody might be crafting over here and, and, you know, on the computer over there.
So you could, you could look at that, again, going to what we're asking. You could look at those numbers and say, hey, you know what, maybe not a full-time employee, not four full-time employees. Maybe you add some transitional language, like they're transitional employees, whatever it may be, if you feel uncomfortable with the 300-foot limit and the number of employees. That's kind of the feedback we're asking. But again, going to the point of, of what Janelle was talking about. So you're looking in E here, I mean, the interiors, no, I'm sorry, C, the interior structural changes should be limited to those that alter the primary purposes of structures of residence. Okay. So again, the idea here is to maintain, so it's the idea, if they sold the house, or sold, told the property to the next homeowner, the homeowner would look at it and say, oh, my God, this is a business. This is not a house. Okay. So whatever changes you make inside to reflect that 300 square feet, okay, shouldn't change your, the, the primary purpose of the building as being a house.
So one of the, one of the comments I would like to make, and you're asking us for some feedback and guidance, is to add some language about seasonal, because, based on the nature of the business, so that if, you wouldn't increase the number over four or whatever, there's the final number of FTEs, but recognize that home business, some home businesses, as you said, let's just use bookkeeping and accounting, have, have peaks. Okay. So just making sure that in the next round, you actually address a little bit of that flexibility.
Absolutely.
And then I also think on the timing, you have a 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I can imagine some residents next door would say, oh, you know, I'm having a problem with people coming early or late. That's just a guideline. So in the application, would they say, my business would start at nine, or, you know, for childcare pickup, every one of us knows as a parent, if you're not there at five, you're, you're penalized and fined. And so, you know, that probably doesn't go till seven. So in other words, you're laying out the hours, but each business would have to come in with their hours in their application, which would help neighbors to appreciate what the flow of activity would be.
But you also. That's extending rights to people by having established 7:00 to 7:00. You're suggesting that, that that would be a right that they would have. And I don't know how we would expect a staff person to, to manage that, regulate that. I don't, explain that to me.
Why I'm going to make that comment is like, this is another ordinance where we're relying on our need, our residents to essentially self-report, you know, to.
Yes, absolutely.
What is going wrong, you know, because, oh, they have a store, like, for example, in the low impact, they shouldn't have a storage container for the business. Well, doesn't say they can't have a shed at all. So now you see, one day they're pulling out their, their mower, and the next day they're hauling out, you know, legal boxes. So, I mean.
Right.
It's up to, you know, Rich to call and say, oh, you know, I, I think they're using their storage facility.
There is a self-reporting aspect. There is a self-reporting aspect to this ordinance. Okay. So the idea that, you know, someone, you know, is making, they start out as a no-impact occupation, for instance, and then they, their business intensifies, and so they, they move up into a, into a tier two. But remember, too, that businesses as it stands now in the, in the city are required to register with the city. So if you have a business and you're required by, in the current ordinance, to register with the city. So that's when those evaluations can be taken place.
And the hours are actually a reduction from what's currently in code. Currently in code, it's a 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Right, okay.
So it was, okay, more or less your daycares, and maybe your bakers or something might be having pickups earlier in the morning. But 7:00 PM, like, for those, you know, somebody's working late, but your, your contractors are going to be done, because the city doesn't allow you to work past a certain time. But I think what we can do is, when they fill out their business license application, is they're like, what, if you're a home occupation, what are your hours of operation?
I have a question that maybe Alex and Janelle can tag. So let's say an HOA, or do they have authority, if we, if this is enacted, do then, does, can an HOA say, well, that's great that Lewis allows it. We're not going to allow it here in.
Correct.
They can.
Correct.
They have that authority.
They could enact stricter regulations than the city.
Yeah.
Right. I have a question regarding, I'm going to pick up on the mayor's first commenter question. And it has to do with the appeal process for, on the, on the, what will occur when property transfers and a new owner moves into, onto a street and realizes that the neighbors, the neighboring home, or the home across the street, whatever have you, or down the street, is a business be, is being operated from, from that location. My question is, did you all take up signage at all in your discussions?
Signage is as part of, is included in the code itself, existing.
I understand that.
We didn't try to overstep signage limitations.
I understand that. I understand that, and the reason I'm asking that question is, is that if a person coming into a community and making a decision to acquire property, if he or she or they do not have the benefit of a sign in the front yard saying that there's a tax service and it being run out of that house, how are they going to become informed? That's not necessarily something that you can expect a licensed Realtor or broker to disclose, because they also might not be able to know what's going on in the neighborhood. I think, I think you all need to think about this carefully, because a property right is a property right, and just because you're new to the neighborhood, I don't think that excludes you from being able to raise a complaint, raise a concern about a business as being.
No, I mean, you're certainly free to raise those issues, Tim. I mean, there's nothing in the ordinance that restricts those kinds of questions to the city. Then it depends, then it's up to the city planner to make a decision, whether or not, well, is there an issue here, number one? And number two, then what's a remedy? The remedy is, does it introduce, do they introduce them in the administrative process?
If you think about it.
But wait a minute, please, excuse me. Let me react to that. If the homeowner who's running the business out of their home has complied with our, what would be our code, then the planner's reaction to the complaint would be basically, well, you're out of luck, the, that business has been registered with the city, we've allowed it, they're compliant. What, where does that leave that new owner, property owner, in trying to settle his?
Well, I'm going to defer to Janelle on that, because we discussed this.
I mean, the remedy needs to be sorted.
So it's like.
What tools are available to the planner, to a planner, to remedy that?
It's like anybody moving into your neighborhood, you have to do, you have to take your responsibility and figure out, am I moving into the floodplain? What is that impact? You know, you need to do your due diligence when you purchase a house.
I understand that.
Because if I'm moving into, onto Savannah Road, and Honey's is next door, then Honey's turns into something else, and then I move in, well.
There's a huge sign.
They are complying with what they are allowed to do.
Of course.
So things can change over time, and like, you know, I can get a new neighbor, and, you know, they might keep a boat in their driveway. Okay, they keep their boat in their driveway, how does that impact me? Yes, because some of these uses, you're not going to know there's a home occupation going on there. Most of these uses, you're not going to know there's a home occupation going on there. Most of the level, the no-impact and the low-impact, you're not going to know, it's the, the potential impact is typically one you're going to know there's really a home occupation going on.
Regardless, I do agree that there's a, this gives direction on how someone attains one of these licenses.
Yes.
On the exit strategy, there needs to be, if you no longer adhere to what you've done to achieve this business, then.
Then there's.
Y needs to happen.
Right, and that isn't actually the mercantile section of the code, because then that will then, how do you revoke a city business license? Which is not in the zoning code.
I would even suggest this, that if you are expecting a purchaser of a property to be able to discern that there's businesses going on in a neighborhood, I'm suggesting, I would suggest that we, as a city, would be expected to provide a registry of, and it be a public registry, available on our website, where we would, we would be able to make available names and street addresses of where these businesses are located. Because the idea that a person looking at property isn't going to be able to discern what's going on around them is unrealistic.
Well, they would have to get a, they'd have to get a business license.
They have to get a business license.
But that's not a, that's not a public document, you know, right? We don't keep a registry of, that's, that's not available to the general public to read, is it?
You want to call and ask, absolutely.
I understand, but if you are.
No, I understand where you're coming, if you want a list that we can put on the website to make sure that if somebody's looking to see if there's a home-based business, we can do that. I'm going to look to Alex to see if that's something that the city can do legally to make sure we're not impacting anything, and that's something we can look at.
Yeah, we can do that.
Add.
One more question for the base, and I do want to move to the public.
I have, I have actually three issues regarding this. One, going along with what Tim had mentioned, I think that in H Park, we put signs in front of a house when it's going to be renovated, when we do any building projects, we put a sign in front of a house. I would think that it would be fair to let neighbors know that someone is opening a home business in the neighborhood to get their responses.
Well, that, to answer that question, Joe, there is a notification requirement in tiers, in tiers C, okay? So there is a public notification, and this is the higher, in those areas where the use is stronger.
Well, second, I had concerns about parking. I think we already have problems with parking here in the city, and I noticed that these, there is mention of parking, but I, it doesn't seem to be really laid out completely. Second, these businesses, I know in Sussex County, if you have a conditional use, or a home use, basically, it does not transfer with the property. So if I have a conditional, let's say I'm running a business, and I decide, well, I'm going to sell the house, and I'm going to sell the business with the house, but I'm not going to be in the house anymore, but I just sold the business. That shouldn't be allowed. These businesses are home businesses, they're applied for by the person that's operating the business and owning the home at that time, so I don't think they should be allowed to transfer.
Yeah, but I think that's understood, because the house won't be, won't be renovated to the point where you can tell there's a business there, so really what you're selling is the IP, or the client list, or whatever that is.
You have to get a new business license.
That's a separate license.
The business licenses are attached to that specific.
To that specific business and that specific owner. So if you don't renew, we'll follow up and go, hey, you didn't renew.
The.
And it's like, oh, yeah, I stopped the business.
The final issue.
What went under?
The final issue that I have is, and it may seem trite, but when we open these businesses, they're all going to have different demands on our trash system. And if I'm running a business that is producing waste from, for example, pets, and I have bags of fur and stuff, and things that are being cleaned, or if I have a medical practice, and I have medical waste, these are things that should be addressed. And if you're running a business, should the city be paying the taxes, or the, paying to remove your trash, if you're running a legitimate business that is producing trash related to the business, as opposed to it just being your home waste? I think that wasn't mentioned, and I think that's important.
Well, I think, to be fair, Ken, I think they've provided a framework at this stage, and then I think that it would be the idea that they were getting feedback from us, and then add more detail and meat to it, to be fair. So I think that's good, you know, you've received some of that.
Mayor, I just want to make one comment, which is, I, so this is a feedback session, we're not judging or ruling, and good for you all to come before you go final with this. So thank you, and for the Planning Commission to do this. I think that's getting lost in this conversation. But also, there are a lot of businesses that don't have business licenses.
Yeah.
Okay? So I'm going to come from the finance side to say, figuring out a way to bring people in who already have businesses, paying some revenue, is smart for Lewis. So not making it so restrictive, but actually saying, we have a process, and we have a process in an area, and you have to pay if you're going to have a business. That's good, that's good for Lewis.
So one other quick thing before I go, is, and you hear a discussion in today, is, the reason we added in tier B, we added a line saying that when animals are involved, it automatically starts the administrative appeal process. And that's really because we recognized that this issue really started with an application, or someone came forward regarding a pet grooming business, and then we wanted to make sure there was an accommodation there for neighbors to appeal that, and to come before you, frankly, and us, and the Planning Commission, to tell us why they believe that's not an appropriate use for that specific neighborhood, even though it is, it is allowed under the zoning ordinance as reflected in this change, that's a limited commercial area, okay? And that is technically allowed, okay? So we, we thought that it would be best not to shut out that application, either on the applicant's side or in the neighbor's side. And so that's the reason it's included, because in all likelihood, it's a tier B business, okay? And so we wanted to make sure that appealed. The other thing is, if it's not there, then it drops into a tier C business, there's off-street parking required, there's no off-street parking in that particular neighborhood, that basically excludes the business. So we wanted to make sure there was an accommodation that you guys could consider when it eventually got to you.
Very thoughtful, and I, you know, a lot of work put into it, so I appreciate. Let's give 10 or so minutes to some public comment here. Let's, Thierry, come on.
Questions for my colleagues on the Planning Commission, Thierry Porey, Harborview Road. I'm not intervening as a member of the Planning Commission, but as a private citizen, pretty much everything I'm going to say here, though I've already said at the Planning Commission. Did you, did you change the requirement for offset parking, off-street parking at all from the draft that we saw? No, that's still the same thing. And about animals, when you presented your slideshow, I had the impression that if, if you didn't meet the other criteria for being tier B or C, you could actually be in tier A with grooming, as long as you didn't have employees, for instance. Did I misread the slide?
They're not, in tier A, you're not allowed to have customers, or people walk into your business, so, no, they'd be tier.
Okay, all right, thank you for this clarification. Okay, so my concern is this, and I'm not going to read my prepared notes, because my colleagues are doing a good job, and the City Council already asked a lot of the questions, so, but my concern is this, it really concerns mainly the tier three, where you can have up to four employees. And actually, I'd like to see four employees, including any people who are not employees, such as, for instance, self-employed people, because theoretically, if you're limited to four employees without any limitation to self-employed collaborators, you could have 20 people, you know, four employees and 16, 16 self-employed into the, into the home. So, but let's assume the limit is at four, all-inclusive. I still think that the recommendation for tier C transforms the residential neighborhoods into a vast quasi-commercial area, potentially, just as if you had changed zoning. I'm going to take the example of Harborview Road, which is our street, because very smartly, you defanged, to a certain extent, the planning, the H Park, by removing those businesses from the, from the city center and from the historic district. But in purely residential neighborhood, like, let's say Harborview Road, you could theoretically have all houses being tier C with four employees. So, yeah, there's no limitation there. And because we are outside of the city center, then there is no limitation on tier C businesses. So for me, once you have more than two people, let's say, and maybe the council will consider that it is more than one person as an employee or as a collaborator, you are not into a home occupation activity, you are in a business. And a business does not belong into a residential neighborhood. I could have understood the reverse, where you would have allowed tier C businesses in the city center, but not in the residential neighborhood. Here, you have the opposite. You have Harborview Road, and you have all the extent of, along Pilot Town Road, all the way almost to the industrial park, these are purely residential neighborhoods, and there, you can have, actually, on every single house, you can have four employees. I don't think this should be the case. I think two employees should be the great maximum, maybe one employees. We're talking of people who are working out of their houses, like I was when I was a translator at home. People didn't even know I was working at home. I could have had a collaborator come with me, and then we would have had one car on the street, but, but that's it. It's not really a business, it was my occupation, I was working from home. But once you start creating a business, you are really transforming the zoning, you're making it a quasi-commercial zone, or light commercial zone, and that's an entirely different animal. So I hope you will think about this, and I know that this is just the first iteration. My colleagues will go back to work, and eventually, the public will give additional comments, and it's going to work itself out. But I think we're only offering good start, but keep this in mind.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you, Thierry.
Stephen Matthews, 405 Savannah Road, I have a prepared statement I would like to read. I applaud the work of the LPC Home Occupation Subcommittee, it's been a long and cold six months of meetings that I attended in person. I wholeheartedly approve of the change from the original list of approved businesses to the new impact rating system, including the proposed administrative process for higher-impact businesses. However, I feel the Subcommittee took a step backwards in requiring that same administrative process for animal businesses, especially in the low-impact category. I wonder, when does a business become an animal business? Pet grooming and dog training seem fairly straightforward, but what about a baker that added dog treats to the menu, or a fashion designer that makes a dog suit for a wedding, or an estate planner with a client who leaves everything to their four-legged friends? Would this trigger the administrative process? By specifying the approved clients of a business, you are encouraging people to monitor their neighbors and track visitors, which does not sound very neighborly to me. You've switched from a list of allowed businesses to a list of allowed clients. In general, I don't see the need to single out animal-centric businesses for special considerations, and I ask that they be removed from both low-impact and potential-impact home occupation types. Either the business is low-impact, or it isn't. Any business operating within Lewis does so at the pleasure of the city, as evidenced by the business license process. If a business receives legitimate complaints, then their business license is in jeopardy. This puts the onus on the proprietor to ensure they are good neighbors, which is where it should be. The repeated concerns voiced by others, noise, parking, operating hours, et cetera, already have existing processes to address them, such as building permits, parking enforcement, and noise complaints. Let the city trust in its own processes and let people work. Thank you.
Rich?
Thank you, thank you for those comments. Rich Ennis, 420 West Fourth Street, the Vice Chair of the Lewis Planning Commission. I just, first of all, I just want to really commend the work of the Chair of our, our Home Occupation Committee, Kevin, and also Bill, and we brought it, and we got some very good feedback from the Lewis Planning Commission, and today, we got some really good feedback from all of you on the City Council. So thank you for that. We're going to take that and try to give you, our purpose here is to give you something very useful that you can then refine, and we've already heard some good comments, but we're going to take that, try to just give you a very good work product here. As you can see, when we first dug into this, we thought, oh, this is going to be fairly straightforward, this is not going to be that big a deal. It is very complex, and as the discussion here today. So, but one thing I do want to address in particular is the comment of our very good colleague, Commissioner Porey, and the thought that somehow by proposing this ordinance, that we are inviting businesses into these neighborhoods, is not our understanding. We're not really inviting, what we're doing is, we're recognizing what is already happening in the community, and putting some structure around it, and as Councilmember Marasco said, trying to bring them into the fold, trying to get them, trying to create incentives for them to be licensed, and to even perhaps bring in some fees, but to just get a handle on this. The other thing I would just say about the waste, because I know that was, we use the term in environmental law, de minimis. And if there is just a small amount of waste, that is, you know, as a, kind of like a small byproduct, I don't think we want to be inhibiting the kinds of small businesses that would help people offset the very high cost of living. De minimis amount of waste, I don't think that we should be thinking about onus of, you know, having them, you know, separated and pay for a separate waste collection, or whatever. If it is a large amount, yes, then I think that we're into a different ballgame. Any rate, I just want to commend the work of the, of this committee, and we're going to try to give you a very good work product in the very near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich.
And Councilperson Saliba also took that word away from law school, too, he likes to use that one as well.
Oh, de minimis?
Yeah. I've heard him use that as well. Come on.
Hi, I'm Sarah Prieto. I'm the one who started this whole process. I just want to ask the council to actually look into the removal of the administrative process from both the animal and low-impact businesses. And the reason why is because it's singling out my business purposefully and specifically, and it is the attempt to appease my three neighbors, and it's not, it didn't work. Background story real quickly is that prior to these public meetings, I had spoke directly to my previous neighbors, the Generals, last year. My husband and I had brought them into our home multiple times during the 150,000-plus renovations, six-month-to-the-studs renovations that we did, and we shared the vision for the salon openly with them. When they expressed their reservations, we sat together on their porch and addressed every one of their concerns. At the end, they stated that they weren't happy about it, but would be our customer if we got it. This sounds great, and it was very, and it was the very intent that the administrative process is trying to happen. However, it didn't matter. Not only did they actually oppose it and speak out against it in the public forum, which is their right, they mobilized all of our neighbors into action against us in a campaign that continues to this day, even though they are no longer our neighbors. This is why the administrative process is unnecessary, and it is actually hurtful to my business. My name has been in the Cape Gazette in several articles, and the TV news segments, and counting. I had to leave my family and work, and work into another state because of all of this, all over this proposed low-impact business. Don't leave my livelihood and the future of small businesses all over the city in the hands of neighbors who may not even live there full-time. And it is stacked, it's stacked against us as it is. Thank you. So I just wanted to actually see if we do add to that, is that if we do have an administrative process and that we're keeping it, I think that it should also be limited to the full-time residents of Lewis, because why would we want, as somebody who does not live here full-time, dictate what full-time residents can or cannot do to their home property? And that was it. Thank you.
Building on that, that's, it's an interesting point that Sarah made, so that would be able to be as ascertained by vote if they were on the voting rolls, right? I mean, if they're a full-time resident versus an investment owner? I mean...
Not everyone's registered.
Not everyone's registered.
How would we be able to determine that, then?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think you can.
Typically, when you actually have to do, like, notice for applications, you're sending it to the property owner. So even if, like, they rent it, like, it's a long-term rental, the property owner gets the notice, because we don't know who the tenant is. So that's typically what the state law requires, is you send it to the property owner.
Thank you, Jeanelle.
Although we do notify non-residents as well as residents of building projects through H Park and other things that we do, because we feel that they do have property rights as owners.
And in fact, I think we're going to talk about public notice later in our...
Value of the property.
Yeah, so stay tuned, stay tuned on that one. Thierry, you've had a bite of the apple today. We can have another time, though.
Anyone else?
Some other topic. You can wait till the very end, we'll take public comment if you're that, if you're patient enough, Thierry. On this topic, you've had your bite. All right, let's then, I'm going to take this opportunity then to move on to the next topic. I appreciate it. Again, I want to thank Kevin and the Subcommittee and the time and thoroughness that they've, and I look forward to the next stage. Okay. So now we hear, Betsy's making her way up to the stage. She's going to give us a presentation on last year and a little bit of a preview on what to expect for this year. Betsy?
Thank you very much for inviting me.
Did you have slides or anything?
No, this is very low-tech.
All right.
And it's going to be brief, not more than five minutes, so that'll be great. I just, before I go into the current year, I'd just like to give a little bit of history for those of you who didn't know, that the Chamber of Commerce has existed for a very long time, even before we were incorporated in 1975, which we will be celebrating our 50th year of incorporation in April this year. So there was a Chamber of Commerce that existed, it just wasn't incorporated until then, and they've been active members of the community, and we've had a wonderful relationship between the city and the Chamber and our businesses, so I just wanted to just make that note. We also were located, and we weren't full-time until 1990. We operated a small visitor center that's over there on, the building is still there. In fact, the city owns it over on American Legion Road, on East Savannah Road, that...
This and that.
This and that. They had a, and they were, it was just seasonal, it was just in the summertime. And then, when the Fisher Martin House was renovated in 1981, they moved into there, but again, they didn't have paid staff, that was just volunteers. And so in 1990, they hired their first executive director, and I came here in 1996. So that's just a little history of the Chamber. I'm going to take a page from Barbara Wernell when she presented to you and read from, so that I don't forget anything. The Chamber currently has 440 members, which was a slight drop in members from last year. I think that part of that is the fact that social media has had a lot of impact, that a lot of businesses don't feel like they need to become a member, because they can advertise their businesses on social media and don't have to pay membership dues and that sort of thing. So that's kind of the feedback that we're getting from some of the businesses that had been members that aren't anymore. But on a positive note, in 2024, after we printed the visitor guide, 51 members joined until the end of the year. So we anticipate we'll be back up and above the level that we had in 2024. We annually update and print the Lewis Visitor Guide for Distribution from January to December, which includes a listing of all of our members, a calendar of events that we compile that's membership-driven. And then, sites of interest, general information, including emergency and reference numbers, churches and community service organizations. There are at least three articles related to our history and attractions that are also included. We printed 10,000 of them last year, reducing the quantity slightly this year, which reflects more people getting their information from our website. We advertise in regional publications like Southern Living, and last year, we bulk mailed 2,500 visitor guides from leads generated from that advertisement alone. We also distribute in our visitor center relocation guides. Most of them are picked up. We also have HOA people that come in for new employees, or new residents, and they will distribute them that way. So we print about 2,000 of those as well. The visitor center is located in the historic Fisher Martin House, is open year-round, including all the holiday Mondays, when many of the museums and city offices are closed. We're open, because we have visitors that do have long weekends, so we're open then. We continue to appreciate the collaboration that we have between the city and the Chamber in housing the visitor center and the Fisher Martin House. From Memorial Day to September, we are open seven days a week, and from October to May, five days a week. Not counting the attendees to Lewis events who come to buy tickets, we have had more than 2,000 visitors per year, and log more than 500 phone calls related to visitation. We don't count phone calls that we get from our members and from residents that aren't related to visitation, so those are our visitation numbers that we have to report to the Southern Delaware Tourism, which goes to the state as well. 2024, Chamber-sponsored events. The Kite Festival was canceled because the field was too wet. We are having it this year, April 18th. Mark your calendar, barring any rain. The Tulip Celebration, a collaboration between Lewis and Bloom and the Chamber, was very well-attended. And our visitor center alone, we attracted 270 people that came during the time period of the Tulip Celebration, which is 155 more than the month before. So it really does, that event, it's going to be in its 16th year this year, really has attracted a lot of people to come to Lewis and see our beautiful gardens. Speaking of gardens, we also have the Garden Tour, which is over 30 years old. I think it's, this is the 37th year coming up. Thank you again for allowing us to use beautiful Zwanndale Park for the vendors, and also for last year, for the first time, letting us have a food truck set up on Savannah Road, so instead of having to rent a tent, we were able to have that expense taken away from the event. And also, finally, Boats the Coast, letting us use 1812 Park, that attracts a lot of people and gets to see our beautiful city dock and the boats that come, that they can tour. And finally, the joint collaboration between the city and the Chamber hosting the Christmas Parade and the Santa House. Again, the Santa House is a very popular attraction for our residents. Some of the challenges that we are facing in 2025, they're not going to be a surprise to you, because they've been on the list for many years, but I will just make a note of them. One is affordability. Your survey that you just did touched on this fact as well. The cost of living expenses are a barrier to recruiting employees to Lewis. Per Sussex County Housing Authority, the average county resident is spending 53% of their income on housing and transportation. Affordable housing for employees. We appreciate very much you all, City Council and Mayor, being proactive in approving the A D U accessory dwelling units ordinance that you did, because that's one of the tools that we have available to be able to house our employees and service workers at a more affordable rate. We're excited about the 140 units at Dutchman's Harvest, with one-bedroom ranging from 100,000 to three-bedrooms to mid-300,000. That's another positive step forward, and I really think Lewis is kind of leading the charge for other municipalities in addressing the affordability of housing for our employees. And then the last one is parking. It's not going to be a big surprise, I've been on three parking commissions in the 29 years I've been here. On our members' wish list would be a parking garage in the historic Commercial District to accommodate their customers who patronize the businesses year-round. And you all go down Second Street and Front Street and everything, that parking lot, 1812 parking lot, is filled by 9:00, 9:30 in the morning, so there isn't turnover, and so anecdotally, we hear that people, you know, come into Lewis, they want to visit our shops and visit our restaurants and museums, and they drive around and they can't find a parking place, and they leave and go out to the highway and where there is free parking. So that's kind of on their wish list. That said, we have a lot of employees that are taking advantage of the bike trails that have gone in recently, and for that, we're also very glad that that exists, so that the walking and biking part of our town creates a synergy between the businesses and encourages employees to do that. So if they're, oh, I want to end on one note. I'll end on a positive note. WorldAtlas.com named Lewis the friendliest small town in Delaware.
Hey.
So, I don't know if you have any questions, but I'm happy to answer them.
I didn't know that one of the events that you mentioned, that didn't mention was the car show.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. Because I was going to say, I've had a chance to participate in that, that's what, coming up in May, right?
Oh, my gosh, thank you so much.
And that's a cool show, the British Car Show. I want to thank you all for, you know, the events and such that you staged it, everyone gets to see, but also the hard work that, and then just a little off, but on topic, and I'm not going to ask whether you approve or disapprove of our previous topic, but in your own membership, are you, do you have home-based businesses, and are you starting to see a trend of more growing?
Yes, in fact, I went to one of their first meeting, and I reported that because of COVID, we noted that there were a lot of more home-based businesses, and so we reached out, and we do have a separate category for home-based businesses. In fact, somebody I know right across from me was one of those home-based businesses until she was elected to council. So, yeah, we recognize that fact.
Do you have any idea how many of those members are?
It's a small number.
Small number. I'm sorry.
We're laughing, Amy's like, alluded, but I was like, no, it's Tim.
I have a business license, I'm a member of the Chamber. And I'm a no-impact business, it's just me. Just for the record.
Okay, thank you.
So, any other questions? And thank you for mentioning, I didn't mention the car show, because it's not located within the city limits, it's out at the ferry terminal, I was basically making use of the facilities that we use in town.
But they parade down Second Street, so I think people have, if you've not seen it before, it's a pretty cool show.
Yeah, and actually, Khalil is going to lead the parade this year, and he's going to be one of the judges.
Yeah, very cool.
Because the mayor somehow has other obligations.
He does, he does.
I also want to thank you for participating in the budget process as well, so I know that, you know...
I really basically learned a lot from Rain and Janet and the other esteemed members that were on that panel. I don't think I really contributed too much to it, but it was, it was a very, the process was seamless because of the work that the staff did to get all the information, and there's lots of information to consider, so.
Thanks, Betsy. And I'll also give Betsy, so while she's, shameless plug, so there's also, you know, other benefits, too. There's a networking breakfast that they do every month as well, so if you're not a member of the Chamber and you have a business in the area, you know, it's worth joining, even if you're running your own Twitters and TikToks and whatever.
And there was one this morning.
We had one this morning, and it's one of our most popular ones, because it's our legislators, our elected officials from the Senate and the House come every year, and they give an update on the issues that were being discussed in this legislative session, so.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Well, building on our theme, our next presenter has got some entrepreneurial interest that he's going to share with us as part of his update on the Blue Economy Initiative. And Rob's been working on this a long time, and he's had some exciting updates in the past, and he's going to just share with us. So Rob, introduce yourself and...
Appreciate. Yeah, thank you for the invite. Rob Nicholson, so I work with the University of Delaware, primarily focused on strategy and funding and program management. I'm also in the Navy Reserve, 25-plus years as a Navy Oceanographer, so there's some external components outside of the university that has allowed for me to sort of connect some, connect some dots. Next slide, please. So first, we'll focus on one of the key initiatives that we're working in, what we are calling within our portfolio of the Blue Economy. So it's blue tech specifically. So a lot of the ocean robotic systems that are operating in industry, we have a majority of them here on campus. You know, to date, I think over the last decade, we've been able to acquire, not necessarily purchase, but through donations as well, about $10 to $12 million worth of platforms and sensors. And so for the folks that aren't super tech-savvy, just think of your platforms as trackers, and then you've got a bunch of attachments that can do a variety of different things, particularly around ocean floor mapping, studying maybe the chemical composition of your oceans and other waterways. So we were successful in securing upwards to $800,000 follow-on funding from an initial seed investment from our congressional, our congressional support. Over the last two or so years, we've hosted a variety of online events and in-person events, and we've had the opportunity to engage about 75 different students. And they're not your traditional students, traditional as in your engineers or your oceanographers. We've had exposure to, we've provided exposure to fishery students, which typically, in that industry, they're very rudimentary in the technologies that they use. It's usually data loggers, a lot of sort of manual processes. So they have had firsthand exposure and experience with operating some of these robotic systems that we have here in Lewis. A lot of them are coming in from different areas, so we hosted a boot camp event where Lewis was one of our supporters there, and we had about 60 different students coming from around the world. We had individuals coming from Europe, we had folks from Canada, and a variety of different folks coming in from around California, Louisiana, the Boston area. And basically, we spent about seven days conducting very highly technical project work. So we had, we had ended up renting three Airbnbs, and we housed all of those students to participate in these events. We hosted multiple events onsite and offsite, so we, these students and some of the other participants went out to restaurants, and we really contributed a lot to the local community. The congressional funding had led to some salaries as well, so we're tracking about $124,000 of salaries, particularly to people that live in Sussex County, I'm one of them. That is not my entire salary, but I will be asking for a raise. So also contributing, we pulled the stats, so about $140,000 that have been injected back into the local community. Some of the other funding that we've secured, and we have one pending that's pretty significant, so $300,000, $330,000K for ocean floor mapping, so we have a variety of different customers and external stakeholders that we support. So we have a variety of different customers and external stakeholders that we support from Denrec. There's some federal agencies as well, like the Army Corps. So we're able to conduct some of the operations with our technologies here in Lewis, with our students and our staff to support pretty interesting projects. $140,000 from the Delaware Department of Labor to basically do a workforce analysis study. So part of my job as a non-scientist is to translate the benefit of R&amp;D into the community, whether it's workforce development or economic development. So we were able to convince the Department of Labor that was, you know, a recipient of federal funds focused on workforce, to allocate it to a specific project. So what we did ultimately, we looked at clean, green, and blue as industry areas, not just energy. So when I say clean, green, and blue, I don't mean just energy, offshore wind, oil and gas, and things like that, and solar. So we looked across the entire gamut with a particular focus on what we believe the state has in-house and what are some growth areas that we could potentially lean into. There was some discussions with some folks in bordering states, so I was able to pull in a couple consultants from Maryland and Virginia so we could get a really good understanding of what our brother and sister states are doing. And as you guys know, Delaware is a small state, and many times, we are a follower in some of these major initiatives, so it's good to learn from our neighbors. In this case, one of the examples that stood out to me is that Governor Youngkin basically said aquaculture is going to be one of our major growth areas, or I should say, our niche growth areas, but we're going to -- we want to lean into it. So essentially, what they did is they built out a subdivision of the category, which is controlled environmental agriculture, and they developed a bunch of incentives and policy structure around that, that ultimately invited in larger companies from around the nation to come and position themselves, and they had a variety of different incentives set up for them. Also, some of the existing organizations and businesses that were in-state were able to leverage those as well, and they were able to grow that piece of the pie pretty significantly. $65,000 for marketing and support, so through sponsorships, Delaware Prosperity Partnership, which is our economic development agency, they have been a huge supporter in what we've been doing. And then, this is pending, but this is recent, so NOAA has allocated and is very interested in technology companies that are advancing, you know, different sensors and platforms, specifically around the oceans. So you think of coastal zone management, you think of ocean floor mapping, you think of, you know, data analytics. We are a recipient of -- we were a subawarded as part of a major award, $14 million. So what that's going to allow for us to do is to bring some of these high-tech companies from around the nation into Lewis and basically run their technologies through the rigor that an academic organization is known for. So they'll be spending a lot more time in Lewis, they'll be spending a lot more time on campus, and they'll be leveraging our facilities and our vessels to go out to sea, and we'll be helping them in that effort. Next slide, please. So just to give you a snapshot, Project Able, so Dr. Archer Venus is my partner in crime. When I was at the Office of Naval Research as my reserve assignment, somebody said, hey, are you doing anything with the University of Delaware in Lewis? And I said, well, I know they're there. This was many, many years ago. I know they're there, I know they do oceanography, but I haven't really worked with them. They introduced me to art. We developed a really good relationship. I said, hey, I'd like to spend more time on campus, and he said, well, I'm going to budget for you. And I was like, okay. Well, let me help you write some proposals, and then bake me into the proposal, and then that way we can bridge that gap. Ultimately, this was one of our biggest wins. So he said, hey, you've got -- I'm speaking with Senator Coons, I need you, or Senator Harper, give me one slide. So this was the one slide that I gave him. And ultimately, this directly resulted in $1.3 million about two and a half years ago. So we really just took inventory of some of our scientific and research expertise. We built them around a plan for various levels of engagement, you know, high school, college, and even local, state and federal government, and it's been pretty successful so far. We do plan on going after Project Able 2.0, which will be a continuation of this, and our ask will be $1.6 million. Next slide, please. So here's just kind of a snapshot. So if you look down below that yellow glider there, it looks like a torpedo with wings, these are some of the technical areas that are involved. So of ocean robotics and the marine science arena, there's a variety of different technical areas. So we've been very fortunate to have a very strong partnership with the College of Engineering up north at the New York campus. So we have the scientific side, and we have the engineering side, and we're bringing them together. That's put us in a very interesting position, a really good position, because now industry is much more amenable to work with us, because we're not just developing scientific breakthroughs and publishing papers, we're actually building stuff, and we can actually support them in their product development efforts, specifically here in Lewis. Next slide. So here's an example of one of our technical demonstrations that we conducted right off the coast here. So this company right here is Liquid Robotics. Their parent company is Boeing. And so we had developed a relationship with the CEO. He has some history in Delaware. His actual parents have a house down here. So we had started to figure out, like, what does a partnership actually look like with you guys? Long story short, we were able to negotiate an agreement where they would ship one of their platforms out here to Lewis. They would send a core of five individuals to Hawaii for training of this system. I was not sent to Hawaii, unfortunately, and I'm still a little bitter about that. I was down in Norfolk, Virginia in March, so it wasn't as fun as the big island, but I hope that at some point I can make it out there. This platform here is about a half a million-dollar platform, and it's -- it could be fully autonomous with very little interaction with it. So what we did was, on one of our vessels, the Deber out there, we took this, it's basically like a surfboard. There was a picture at the beginning I can go back to, but it's -- imagine a surfboard, and it's got an umbilical cord, and it's got fins, and it harvests the energy of the motion of the ocean and is able to propel itself forward. So we deployed this thing, it was November, maybe two years ago, we deployed it out off our coast, and for a two-week journey, it traveled 230 miles around, and basically, that was the -- it was by itself, right? The only interaction we had was a text message once an hour to the operator, and it said, hey, I'm here, and here's, everything's good to go, right? So it's a very, it's a trickle of data that goes up through satellite, back to an operator, and that was very successful. We were able to recover it, bring it back to shore, and we had a lot of our students support it in addition to, you could see the CEO and two other operational people there who had spent some time in the Lewis area. Next slide, please. So we also have some tech demos with some startups. So on the left-hand side is a French startup that they have a small UUV, which goes down and did some surveying work off the coast here. And then on the right-hand side is a Rhode Island-based startup, and they have these little Jaybots. So these things can actually cruise about eight knots, or eight miles an hour, give or take, and they can go so fast that they actually hydroplane out of the water. So a super interesting platform. So, you know, a lot of these companies, they have what we refer to as beta research. It's things that don't make sense for them to do in-house, so they lean on universities to be able to conduct that type of research. Next slide. All right, next, I'm going to transition over to our fisheries and aquaculture. I'm sure you guys have seen some of the activity or been on site. They're doing some great things down there, Ed Hale and his team. So this is another one of the programs that we folded underneath of our Blue Economy portfolio, not only for the research side, but also the economic development side. Once I started learning more about this, it was super exciting because you could think about, University of Delaware is involved in the very beginning, and then eventually you go out into the restaurants and the oysters that they were part of producing, getting to the point of consumption, it's in the restaurants in the area. So they have some really good achievements and significant amount of follow-on funding. So one of the interesting things about this here is that if you guys are tracking some of the oyster sort of, the policies that are impacting oyster hatcheries and oyster farming, it was typically housed within the state's agency of Denrec, and, you know, we all have our, we've all engaged Denrec in some form or fashion, and I'm sure we have --
Well said.
Yes, I'll be diplomatic up here. What they have identified is that it was a little bit too restrictive for growth in this industry, so they moved it under the Department of Agriculture, because agriculture makes more sense. They, the farmer, you know, owns a plot of land or leases it, they produce something, they shouldn't be the same restrictions as maybe Denrec would put for permitting and other things. So I think it's really going to open up this industry and give a lot more economic development opportunities for our locals here. So just to kind of hit on some of the things, and I've got some slides to support these as well, but they've had about, they've secured about $4 million, and all of that is going locally into programs, into staff, into buildings and other structures. So, and this is from state and federal levels. Next slide, please. So if you guys are familiar with their location, Roosevelt Inlet, if you're, that little white box there with the arrow, if you look, if you look straight east, southeast, you're going to see the Lewis Yacht Club. So that little area, I think, has a lot of potential for growth, just because the university owns it, it's co-located with the Coast Guard, and then it backs up to the marina and the parking lot right there. So I think that that's a really good area that could potentially be developed and have other investments made into it. If you look at the pictures, sort of the, there was an open shell, there's a story that that used to be some type of slaughterhouse, and there was like channels that I think would flush liquids and other things out. I don't know the entire story, I actually intentionally did not ask, I didn't want to know it. But they've been making some investments into it, tanks and holding tanks, and basically, this is what they use to create the seed, which is the oyster, and then they actually donate it to the farmers. The farmers then seed the shells, they plant, they put the shells out into the fields, and then they wait over time, and then they harvest it, get the oysters, and then deliver them to the restaurants. Next slide. So here are some conceptuals of what they're interested in building. So as I mentioned, to date, they have about $4 million. I'm probably going to be getting a little bit involved with that project, just to kind of help out on the program and the strategy and some of the other fundraising. So this is an example of what it would look like if indeed the total, there was a total investment of over $16 million. Next slide. And then here is sort of a general idea of the footprint, conceptual designs.
Did you take this off of screenshots from the master plan?
There's a little inside joke there, but no, I got it directly from the source. I still haven't seen that master plan, by the way. Next slide, please.
And what is the location, the site, proposed site?
Yeah, it's over, it's over near the existing hatchery.
It's where, it's, okay, got it.
Correct, yep. Near MRR, and there's that other EP, ELT building, I forget what that other building's called. So this is what it would look like if it was a, you know, there's a lot of partnerships between Dell State and University of Delaware in and around aquaculture. So if indeed there was an opportunity to partner with them, they could bring in, it would be a research activity, it'd be a little bit of sort of operational and some student learning activity as well.
My chance, have you talked to MRR about cohousing here? Because, you know, as you probably know, they've come to us about the Green Hill project there, but, I mean, if you're looking for co-tenants, you know, shared, you know, mission in some ways, facilities.
That's a good idea. Yeah, that's a good idea. Let me talk to Ed and kind of see where the overlap is. Yeah, I think everybody has some funding, but it's like, it's not infrastructure funding.
Sure, sure.
You know, that's, that's the, that's what is really needed, right? Programmatically, I think all of our programs, well, they have been very good. There's some challenges that we're working through right now. Programmatically, I think we're okay. Baseline staffing, I think we're okay. It's the big infrastructure investments that obviously aren't typically what is purpose-coded for some of this money that is available at the state or the federal level. Next slide, please. So that wraps up. I wanted to leave some time for some questions, and then if you guys haven't been on campus, I think that's a really good way to really dive deep and to see and smell and feel what the campus is doing.
I was going to say, I appreciate you coming in. That's one of the reasons, like, we like to have Rob come in. One is I think a lot of our residents like to know what's going on up there, and there's a lot going on, but you don't, you know, see. And Rob in particular is, you know, this is something I very much support, is entrepreneurship and helping grow the footprint, and the commitment from the college, because I think there's, the residents, university, when I speak to them, love having the University of Delaware here and part of our community, so I wanted to make that the second part, which is, as Rob said, folks, Rob and others can make themselves very available to show you around. It's very, if you geek out on that kind of stuff, it's really a cool kind of startup-ish kind of atmosphere up there, and so I wish, you know, I thank you for coming in, and whatever the city can do to support this university and your efforts, we appreciate.
And I would just add that they highlight the synergy, actually, between Betsy Reamer speaking about our Chamber of Commerce, our 400-plus businesses here, and one of the things that the mayor and I have talked about a number of times over the years, when we first met you and Dave Lawson, was diversifying our local economy.
Yep.
I mean, we're basically a, there's nothing wrong with it, we're basically, you know, our tourism, hospitality is our base economy here. However, what you started down there with Ocean Infinity and mapping the ocean floor and these various companies and startups that are coming here, thanks to Project Able and the whole Blue Economy Initiative, I think it's incumbent upon us to do everything we can to work with you and want to. You referenced earlier, we actually were one of the sponsors of one of your conferences last year.
Yes, yep.
Because this is economic development, but it's also a diversified economic development for the city of Lewis and the surrounding area. So thank you both.
To that question, Rob, if people, like, so some of these things look like they were sort of public-private partnerships, or you're getting funding from, you know, private companies. How about VC side? Like, you know, we have a lot of sort of well-to-do and former investors or current, you know, angel investors and such. Do you have some of that going on? Is there, you know, is there, is there a channel and avenue for that if there are people locally that would want to?
There is not a formal channel, but we do, we do interact with a lot of startups. So we, you know, we could, we could assist in deal flow, right, to kind of get the visibility and relationships and the handshakes, but we don't have structured programs to facilitate that formally. So if indeed there is interest in saying, hey, like, who are the hot companies that you guys are working with? We've got a series of folks that may want to, you know, angel or pre-seed. We can certainly facilitate an event to kind of bring those people together to, you know, to discuss.
You know, that was actually at the Chamber's breakfast this morning, Senator Huxwell was talking about aquaculture, because he serves, obviously, on agriculture, but there were a lot of side conversations after he presented, talking about the gem of the University of Delaware, the Marine Group, and how can the city and, going with the mayor, and other businesses help strategically to present this as a global center? Because what you have technically is world-class.
Very good.
Okay, and so, you know, just be thinking about what we can do in the city, but the chamber, there were many chamber members that were like, we need to really look at this. And the, there was also, Senator Huxwell talked about the connection between bringing in more professionals to grow with the university, also brings in partners that might address some of the other medical needs and other things in the community. So he was trying to, connecting the dots on those.
I mean, I'm a dot connector, I love connecting dots. So if there's an opportunity to engage, that'd be great. I did want to mention two other things, one of which is, you know, we, we had some technical projects that we were working on, and we started to sort of build it up into, what does this actually mean for the state? So we really tagged Blue Economy, you know, Blue Economy Portfolio. And ultimately, what we do, it is advocating at multiple levels all the way up through the governor's office and beyond. And the Delaware Prosperity Partnership is tasked with developing a science and technology plan for the state. And so, not to get in all of the weeds, like, if you want to break out, we can do some, I could spend hours talking about this, but other states have a Department of Commerce, we do not as a state. So some of the functions of a Department of Commerce are typically aligning some of these groups within the state to go after large-scale federal funding. Again, Delaware doesn't have one. So one of the key areas that I know South Carolina does very well is coordinating efforts around a science and technology plan, which ultimately then ensures that when the state goes after federal funding, everybody is aligned. The state of Delaware doesn't do that. So this science and technology plan is designed, for the state, is designed to put all that together. They just published some preliminary growth areas, and there were seven. One of the niche areas was the Blue Economy. So there, there's getting a lot of interest within the state, and so does that translate to policy and funding, and those are all the next steps. But what I learned with my short stint in government and statewide is that when a word makes it in a PowerPoint that's an official document, that's the seed, and then you just have to build and advocate around that. So that's --
Is this an initiative that Matt Myers is fairly aware of and supportive of?
He will be, he will be a recipient of this report. So this is a DPP report that they're putting together. They're going to deliver it, I think, in March or April. Our Clean, Green, and Blue Report, we're going to submit at the same time, so there'll be two recommendations with heavy Blue Economy, Blue Tech, aquaculture baked into it. So it'll, they'll be hitting, they'll be hit from a bunch of different sides on that. One of the things that we did ask to take a look at for inspiration, if you guys are familiar with Willoughby Bay down in Norfolk, Virginia, so it was a partnership between Old Dominion University, I think they had a little state money, and then Norfolk, maybe it was the Hampton Roads, like, I think there's a Hampton's Road Roundtable, Business Roundtable. They said, hey, we're doing a lot of technical evaluation of -- They said, hey, we're doing a lot of technical evaluation of ocean robotic systems down here. Can we make some improvements to that little Willoughby's Bay to serve as a launch hub that has infrastructure and, you know, sort of updated infrastructure? I think that would be ideal for a national pool.
Exactly.
And even a global pool.
Right.
Where it's like, hey, if you want to test your gear, there is a location, Roosevelt Atlet.
Right.
You're co-located with the university. You've got all the tools, the specialty areas, the research vessels. And if you want to, if you want to run your technologies through the wringer, and you really want to test it out, you can do it here in Lewis. And I think that that, you know, we've seen the results of bringing one company in to do testing on their technology one time. Imagine that times 30, 40, 50 companies a year coming to the area.
Any other questions from the dais? Let's give a couple, opportunity for anyone, anyone in the audience? All right, Rob, I really appreciate, and I appreciate the work you're doing, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
All right, Pete, finally, your turn.
Stiffening up. All right, we're here to talk about the Fisher Martin House. And I was tasked with that as a volunteer and have had a great experience doing it. Next slide, please. Qualifications, I've been a building contractor for 45 years, self-employed for over 40 of that. One of my specialties has always been historic renovation, restoration, and repurposing. Next slide. That's Fisher Martin House as it sat in the early part of its life in the 50s, so it was 200 years old at that point.
It looks authentic now.
But yeah, I brought this up, and there are more of them, to understand the condition that it was actually not found in, but was left in. And if you look at the front elevation, the lower hole, I think it was actually being used as a chicken house at that point, unfortunately, for it. Next slide. These are just details. This is the left elevation on the right-hand side, and the right elevation on the left-hand side. It appears to still have original siding on it, not on the right-hand elevation. That's barn shingles that were added on top of it. But all of the research that I've found, it appeared that it was fairly untouched at that point. The owners had made some new sash with the help of DePont family member, who was actually, her relatives were the original owners of the property. Next slide. More details, you can see the dental molding that's referenced a lot. If you go into the historic documents, you can see the seam on the left-hand side where it was added on to at one point. Unfortunately, that was all removed at some point. Go to the next slide.
Excuse me, Pete, there is a clicker there on that podium. You might be able to use the, no.
Easier to ask.
Okay.
So this is, this is the left elevation before anyone even patched up the windows. And again, we're going to get into the fact of, what do you think is behind that siding? So when you see how weathered and leaky and, you know, open the building was, that's why I'm doing this. Next slide. This is quite some time after. There's a picture with a Chevrolet Chevette in the front of it, so it's 1975 or later, and it's clearly before it was moved. But Mrs. E. Paul DePont with Mrs. Horsey, both relatives from the Fishers, raised and restored the building with the help of the Delaware State Archivist. The shutters were added because it would continue to get vandalized while it was located in Cool Spring. On the front elevation, they've moved all the siding that was left over from restoring it to the front elevation to keep it historically accurate. On the sides and the back, it was already reproduction siding at that point. Next slide. And this is after it was moved to Lewis, and it was essentially moved in the same condition. The fireplace was rebuilt at that time, though, because obviously it's a lot harder to move it with a fireplace. Next slide. And this is what we have today. And clearly, very little work has been done since the late 80s. There's minor painting work that's been done. It was re-roofed one time when it was here. It had the bulkhead doors replaced. It's had the crawl space mitigated, and you guys have taken care of air conditioning needs. And again, there's a real change in the use of the building. When it was built, there was no standard. So then modern living, converting it to modern living, you become, you make the building prone to all kinds of moisture issues. Next slide. This is just one more slide of it sitting here as of today. Next slide. Some moisture, we'll deal with that. Stabilization and preserving the building. Moisture is a primary factor that destroys the building. Wood needs to decay, needs oxygen, it needs temperature, and it needs moisture. If we eliminate the moisture, we're going to stop the decaying of the wood. Unfortunately, it's like a cancer. Ideally, you want to remove all of the decay. The federal guidelines mean that it should be patched. As it stands right now, though, all the exterior that you see, the roofing, the siding, the windows, the doors, they're all replicas. There's no need to restore them. And if you were to do it, the ongoing maintenance is going to continue forever. So there's ways that the moisture is getting into the building, and obviously it's leaks. If you go look at it, the siding's failing, the roofing's failed, the windows are failed. There are plumbing leaks in the crawl space. There's flashing that's been corroded away and disappearing, so water is just getting into the building. The finished grading from the beautiful gardens has gotten to the point where it slopes back towards the building, and that should really be addressed also. And just living, we go in there, we sweat, we breathe, we cook, we make tea, and that's creating more moisture. So the idea is to stop all that moisture infiltration. And the obvious is new roof, new siding, new windows, and rework the HVAC a little bit. Because with modern living, no matter how well we sealed the building from the outside, we need to deal with the moisture that's coming up from the ground and the people and rising up through the building. So the easy solution to that is central dehumidifiers on each one of those HVAC systems. Next slide. This is scans on the inside of the building, and honestly, I picked the worst spot, obviously, for the pictures. This is a kitchen on the second floor. The darker the color in the left-hand picture is, the higher the moisture, because the temperature is dropped. If you look at the center slide, it's 71 degrees. It was about 90 degrees outside. That was in July of last summer. That is cooled, not because of them running the air conditioning, but also because of the evaporation of the water that's inside that wall. The far right-hand slide is a moisture meter. 41% is off the charts. It's mulch or dirt, if you were taking care of your garden outside. Next slide. This is a crawl space down below that you guys have already mitigated. Unfortunately, they must have had a water problem once they were done, because they left like the Love Canal on the left-hand slide. And it's holding water. At any given day, if you open it up, you can even see in the left-hand slide where the water has been higher at times. So, you know, you might find a dry day if it hadn't rained for a very long time. It's coming into there from plumbing leaks, as well as possibly soil leaks. I left a picture on the right-hand side just showing, I'm sure a lot of you have mitigated crawl spaces. And it'll be smooth and tight and look like a swimming pool. Next slide. This is a little out of order, and I realized that later. But in terms of a new roof, what you see on the left is a split-shake roof. What you see on the right is a shingle roof where it's cut with a saw. The building clearly did not have shingles in its early, original format. It had shakes because it was manpower that split them out. When manpower was very inexpensive, and unfortunately probably even involved slaves, they would hand-plane them. So they had a smooth surface on one side, but you still get the irregularity of it. And it's going to be a much thicker and really more attractive roof because of the shadow lines, and that's what I would recommend. Next shot. This is the exterior, just some details. You can see where the siding's had it. It has an awful lot of face grain and vertical grain, and I don't know if you can understand that. But two boards below the second-floor right-hand window, if you see the pretty feather marks in that board, that's face grain. Yeah, Tim can point it out. That would never last and shouldn't have ever been put on the building. What you want is vertical grain. You want tight horizontal lines. And we get into the species of indeed changing the siding, what would I recommend using? And unfortunately, I wouldn't recommend much that we can get today, other than rainforest wood. Sepelli being probably my original choice is what I budgeted for. And/or I checked with sources about using river-recovered cypress, which is clearly what was on it originally, was first-grown cypress. And when they logged Florida and other areas, a lot of those logs sunk, and they stayed underwater. So again, without oxygen, they're not rotted. When they pull them out, they look like the day they were cut down. They're just waterlogged. On the right-hand slide, all the exterior millwork is rotten. You can stick your finger through it randomly in almost any given place. Next slide. So then we get into the windows. The windows are also replicas, and they're not even historically accurate. I've gone round and round trying to find sources. The original people who worked on it in the 80s unfortunately have all died. Jack Vessels, University of Delaware's professor, the original author of the books on historic architecture of Delaware, none of them exist anymore. But if you look at the center slide, the mullions are very clunky, and I know Joe didn't like that, too. If you look at the right-hand slide, that's indicative of the original windows. And I've lived in 19th century, very early 19th century buildings. That's what they look like. They're delicate as can be, not clunky on the left. I put the left-hand slide there just to show you how rotted they are. And that's not even the worst one. I could have done much worse. And the top is an AutoCAD drawing with two different muttons, if you really want to be correct. The left hand being what we have today, and the right hand being more accurate. And further research could still be done on that. There are manufacturers who will make windows for us. The guy who used to run my wood shop in Newcastle County is in business and has built windows for even the Capitol Building after the visitors came on January 6th and kicked them all in. So he has the qualifications and the wherewithal to do that, too. Next slide. This is the attic. Okay, and I guess I wasn't really clear, too. I'm not a great speaker. But what's in the crawl space ends up in the attic. All that moisture rises. It's more buoyant air. And so the people working in there are breathing that moisture from the basement. As well as this attic, when it was moved here, somebody put fiberglass insulation down on top of the beautiful floorboards that are in that attic. And it is flattened. It's useless. It's a health hazard is what it is at this point. That should all be cleared out. And next slide, I might have a picture. No, I don't. I thought I had a picture of what it looked like. It was actually a usable space. It's called the cock loft because it's an attic above an attic, first of all, too. It has an air conditioning system up there and heating system. That puts that in a ventilated space, which is very unhealthy, too, because it will condense moisture in the ductwork. What I would propose is insulating the attic and sealing the attic. So the next slide. That's Zip-R. It's a product that's made for exterior sheathing. And if you look at the left-hand picture, you'll see the green board OSB behind it, and then Iso-Cyanureate Foam. You can get it with up to two inches of foam. Each half-inch is R6. So even the one-inch-thick board would be 600% better than what we have now. We could certainly, and what I budgeted for was two inches of ISO at this point. And I've talked to the manufacturer of that board and said, look, we're not meant to do any harm to this attic. So what I propose is screwing that with the prettier green side down towards the attic space and taping all the seams. And when I talked to the engineers at Huber, they said that it's indeed been done dozens of times, not thousands. And they do not have a recommended purpose for that or use of that, but they would work with us in terms of doing it. When you get to the siding, when it was originally taken off from the first move here in 81, the idea was to analyze the condition of the framing and then change the siding. Somewhere along that line, that siding changed the look of what it was originally. If we were re-siding the building, which we have to, it's tempting to us to resheat it, because then you could get at least R6 on the sidewalls, and you stop the moisture transfer again. Next slide. So that's how, again, how it ended up here, and that's, is that your last slide, I think? Okay, and the next one. So there's a real decision that has to be made, is what should the building look like? You know, I, in my experience, think it should look like it did historically when it was built. That is clearly you guys' decision, and how the decision was reached in the mid-'80s to change the look so significantly, I have no idea.
That's the original look right there.
Absolutely. That's the original siding on the front. It wasn't, it was moved to the front from the rest of the building. And those are the original reworked windows that were also written off here in the mid-'80s.
Pete, I think you're, I really appreciate the work that you've done. It's remarkable. And if we ever need, if the LHS needs a fundraiser, I would suggest a Jeopardy-style tournament between Randy Burton and Pete. And have them, you know, just flash up images, and you call out the periods and such. But specific to this, so as you may be aware, this is, we've gotten a trash from the state. And so has part of your recommendation has been, stage one, do X, and stage two or three, do Y and Z? Or how, what do you, have you given those sorts of directional data to us?
Tim and I have talked a lot. Clearly, the roof needs to go first. I mean, that's the way you would approach any project here, to stop rain from infiltrating into the building. Secondly, the windows need to be manufactured. They're not going to come out of a warehouse somewhere. So there's time delay on that also. Once the windows are in hand and the siding milled and in hand, that's when I would go after the project. Staging it is an interesting question, other than the roof and buying the material. Because with the siding off, you're given one opportunity and one opportunity only to fix the framing. They did not do that. They put nailers in. There's some really bad pictures that your guys are going to get a report from me that show the siding off in 1985, I think it was, and only on the right-hand elevation. So to get the plywood sheathing to even break, they just added a nailer, we called a scab, and it's white wood two-by-four randomly placed inside a building and nailed to a rotting timber. So there's a chance to open the walls and fix those timbers. Maybe we can make this thing stand another 300 years. If it's not done, there is some deflection already. If you look in the grate room, you know, there's some sag here and there, and it should be addressed.
Do we have an estimate for the entire project?
I do, and unfortunately, it doubles the scope of the funding that's in place already.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask you.
That's where you would get, it's up to you guys, but you'd have to get into staging. And maybe it is literally roofing and then just stockpiling material and going after more.
That's what I was going to kind of ask you, that similar question, I think Amy is getting at. If we were a paying, you know, a customer just coming to you, you would just recommend tearing down the studs, doing everything at once, don't stage, just spend?
I wouldn't go in the interior. The interior's historic. I would work from the outside.
Okay.
If you look back in the Delaware archives, there's 60 pictures of the building, and 25 of them probably cover the interior. A lot of that interior was already in there.
But certainly your preferred choice would be to do it all at once, don't stage, just once you've got it on go.
Budgetary-wise, it could be done by doing the roof and then stockpiling materials.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
With the intention of moving forward.
Yes, right, right. It wouldn't do you any good if you didn't use it.
Right, and the benefit of, obviously, doing the roof, it just stops the worst part of the moisture coming in, but, or?
The worst part is probably the windows and the siding right now. Fortunately, but it's just, it's a clean, easy place to start. I've looked at it in two ways. One is, that was originally Cypress shingles, I'm sure. So those would have to be made. And if we had them made, I don't think we could find a soul who would actually hand-split them. But we could find someone, I have found two sources that will cut them. And I've found sources, again, a couple sources of the river-covered wood. Is there a need to go that far? Probably not. You know, if we do the roof, as I'm saying, with an interior insulation, the roof would still be ventilated. Those original roofs, when there was no heating and air conditioning, would last 100 years. But once we start heating, insulating, and air conditioning them, they don't last long at all. They'll last 20, 30 years.
And so that's why you want to separate the top?
And so that's why you want to separate the top roof from the conditioning in the bottom?
Yes.
To keep that healthy.
Yeah, we can't do anything to the sidewalls without gutting the second floor. And again, I don't think it was gutted originally. It was patched.
So do you have access to the kind of artisans we're going to need to be able to do this?
I do. I've talked to several, and I talked to one yesterday that could even be a project manager, but that's up to you guys. And I'd be available, certainly, to just spend an hour a day.
And I had one more question. You know, I've been in the building and I, you know, I agree with you and your analysis of the health of the building. How healthy is it to have people habitating that building right now?
Right now, it's so leaky, I don't think it's a big deal, frankly.
Okay.
But I mean, eventually, it's just going to get worse and worse. There's clearly mold and things growing in the walls, within the walls.
The air quality, I was thinking.
And then fiberglass in the attic. My humble opinion only, now it'll be on tape, but is fiberglass would be as illegal as asbestos.
Yep.
If it wasn't in every damn building in the country. We wouldn't be allowed to work with it. I've been told that they will know, have no idea how much is in my lungs until I die and they burn up a cubic centimeter, and what's left, they'll be able to extrapolate how much I've breathed in over the years.
Hopefully, that's years, many years from now.
Yeah, well, at least till we get this done.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions from the dais, and then we'll...
Well, just, you asked the question about what's our, what's the goal of restoration?
Right.
And I think that's the one, you know...
That you guys have to define.
That we have to decide. I mean, I know the money would be separate, but you know, it's...
I have a ton of research that I'll send to everybody. But I mean, I have, I did measure drawings of the building on and on and on, found anything and anything I could read. And picture-wise, I have hundreds of shots of it.
Pete, I had one more question, and that is, how much time do we have before some more serious damage is done to this building?
I think that's already passed.
That's passed?
Yeah.
So we're at the critical stage.
Because right now, the leaks are getting into the rot repairs that they never did on the, on the framing. And so it's continuing to rot.
Okay. So we've got to get that stopped.
It would be smart.
So what I recommend is maybe on, even on our next agenda, regular meeting, is have it as an agenda item, so that we can discuss what our options are as a council to move this, continue to move this forward. Because Pete's done a lot of work that we really should have been doing years ago.
Well, and I should have done it sooner possibly, but yeah.
But it does sound like you're not recommending they drink hot tea in there even.
And to hold their breath.
So fancy, no tea?
Not breathing, stop.
Coffee? Any hot beverages, it doesn't sound...
Stop breathing.
So, okay, so that, you know, we'll make a plan, at least put that on, whether we'll take specific action or not, but we'll, we'll take what he's recommended out of this report and hopefully can move something along. But I really, Pete, incredible amount of effort, and just in general, I want also, you know, he represents, we have a lot of bench talent here in the city of Lewis, and it's just another great representation of the wealth of intellectual capacity we have here in the city. So I really appreciate you giving it to us.
Thank you. Thank you, Pete. Appreciate.
So, okay. Next then, I, speaking of intellectual capacity, is Mr. Fritschman here? There he is. You're hiding behind there. Come on up, he's going to give us a report on, what your recommendations are with HP Smith Park. Hey, Todd.
Yes, sir. Good morning, everyone. Todd Fritschman, Lead Environmental Professional, EnviroTech Environmental Consulting Incorporated. And my objective today is to point out to you some of the deficiencies relative to the Blockhouse Pond, pollustine wetland system that is serving the city for active and passive recreation, stormwater, water quantity, quality treatment before discharge. And so I have a PowerPoint here today to briefly, in generalization, show you what those deficiencies are. So background information, Blockhouse Pond is located within the city limits of Lewis, Delaware, northwest of the hospital. And the purpose of Blockhouse Pond is for active recreation, passive recreation, stormwater management, again, water quantity and quality storage treatment, habitat for wildlife. So it does serve as a, an amenity for the, for the city. And I've been tasked to produce a routine maintenance and management plan for both water quality, maintenance and management, and also the integrated vegetation management for the riparian zone, the no-mo zone of the riparian buffer around the water column. But over the course of time and becoming very familiar with Blockhouse Pond, we are also responsible for deficiency reporting. So Blockhouse Pond is currently experiencing massive erosion at the permanent pool elevation, basically from capillary wave action contacting slope soils, and then by the reflection, or refraction of that wave off of the exposed soil layers, it's transporting the soil away from the shoreline, causing sloughing, sumping, and pitting of the surrounding perimeter of that system. This is a map that shows the drainage where the stormwater management inputs occur, and then the outfall structures and so forth. If we could move to the next slide then. So these slides show you the erosion that is occurring. Obviously, because it's a stormwater management system, that water column ebbs and flows, it rises and falls due to the inputs of hydrology that come in with stormwater events. But the capillary wave action is really pulling the soils away from the reflection off of those soils. Some of these erosive areas are significant, four or five feet into the slope, which is not only environmentally unsound, because the entire purpose of stormwater management is to prevent silt and sediments from entering the water column and then flowing out of the system. With all that silt and sediment is bound nutrient, which then flows out and goes off into jurisdictional wetlands and eventually into the inland bay system. So that's not good. But there's also obviously some liability to this, because as these things cave in, then what happens when people are conducting their active and passive recreation through this riparian zone? This will not correct itself. This will have to be manipulated and stopped in some way. So we've basically have three options to present to you today. The problem, of course, is the scouring and erosion that's occurring at that, that permanent pool elevation, pretty straightforward. And if we go to the next. So the solutions, obviously, probably the most effective and efficient, not most environmentally sound, is the bulkhead-ing of the entire perimeter. So bulkhead-ing is pretty straightforward, whether it be timber or corrugated high-density plastic. Bulkhead-ing would eliminate the problem, because now the capillary wave action would reflect off of the timber or the corrugated plastic, and no longer having soil exposure and transporting the soil away from the, from the slope. That would be the most costly option, but would also be the most environmentally unsound option, because now you don't have nutrient uptake with plants. Habitat would be reduced. Reptiles and amphibians would no longer be able to get in and out of the system. Fishing would be altered somewhat. Remember, Blockhouse Pond is a major fishery and is used heavily by the people in the, in the community for fishing. So that is an option.
Todd, are you saying in this solution, you're bulkhead-ing both, both the interior island and the exterior shoreline?
Absolutely, yeah. The entire, 100% of the shoreline, both on the island complex in the middle and the perimeter, are erosive. And it's significant. So yes, that is, that is correct. Or there could be hybridization. You could bulkhead one section and then use other options on other parts. So this is not all cut and dry. There's many different options and many ways to approach this. Second solution, number two, well, this is, we're still on number one, the bulkhead, these are just rudimentary designs. Bulkhead-ing would not require any major soil disturbance into the existing condition, but however, tiebacks would have to be installed. The big significant problem of this is to do any of these options, all woody-stem tree vegetation's going to have to go initially.
Yep.
Now, this system can be reforested and trees reinstated and grown and developed, but to install any of these options, the woody-stem trees will have to go for access, you know, to complete the project. So if we go to the next slide, the second option would be your, your conventional geotextile fabric riprap stone. These next two options, two and three, would require that the embankment be reconfigured to a three-to-one slope, as opposed to a vertical slope. In other words, all the woody-stem trees would have to be removed. Then excavators would be used to convert the vertical slope to a three-to-one slope, so that it's on a angle, okay? And then your geotextile fabrics would be laid down, next slide if we may, and keyed in at the top and the bottom, so that water can't infiltrate underneath of the armory, the stone armory, and then keyed at the bottom, so water doesn't pull soil out. That's the critical component of this corrective actions recommendation. If you don't key that fabric in, and that's probably the most observed deficiency with stormwater management and other types of shoreline reventment, is that the key-ins don't take place and it fails. That's, it's really important. Again, this one would be, in terms of habitat, would not be recommended as a habitat promoting system. There would be plantings at the toe, at the toe of the slope, in front of the stone. The other problem with stone is that youth and children and kids like to grab, it's an inherited reflex of some sort, where kids like to, we've all done it, you take the stone, you throw it in the water to see what happens.
Is that why they're intending to cage them now? I noticed that more and more you're seeing...
Well, those are gabions. Yeah, those are gabions, and gabions serve distinct purposes, not necessarily, that's a, typically to break up channelized flow and concentrated flows, so that the water can flow through, but not concentrated. Yeah, those are gabions. Yeah, different technology. But over time, you would lose a lot of stone. And then the other problem with stone is that as, you know, people or kids go around to fish, that stone gets displaced. And it's not a very stable situation. The stone can move if your body's walking on top of it. So the third option is a living shoreline option. And the Filtrac solutions are a great living shoreline stabilization. But again, this one would require all the trees be removed, slopes regraded to a three-to-one slope. And then that's a vegetated stabilization. So over time, while this vegetation native plant stratum's selectively appropriated to the microclimate, what's at the bottom would be different than what's at the top. You've got to have hydrophytic vegetation at the bottom, water-loving plants, perennials that would root, deep anchor root and hold this system together over time. And then you transition into more upland species as you go up. But again, this would require all woody stems to be removed, three-to-one slope creation, and then the underlaymen fabrics, and then the, these are basically compost-filled polypropylene socks that are seeded, and planting's done interstitial amongst these composted socks. And then this would, this would be a no-entry zone, a no-disturbance zone until maturity is reached. Any of these options would be. So in other words, people aren't going to be, we're going to have to have some restriction to correct this, if indeed you choose an option, any of these. Basically, three options. This could be hybridized.
I was going to ask that, and to that end too, Todd, like, pond that large, is there, like, would you suggest, for example, doing, say, a third of it with a living shoreline, let that grow in and let, you know, whatever erosion's taking place, and then stage that way?
Well, I don't mean do it in increments. I would not recommend doing it.
You were saying do it all at once.
If you don't do it all at once, typically what happens is...
So that answers that.
You can arrest the erosion in one zone, but that may increase erosion in the area that isn't stabilized, because now that wave energy gets deflected.
Okay, that understood.
And it still has access. So that can actually exasperate and make more difficult exponentially the erosion in other areas if it's not done.
So it sounds like in all these solutions, then, the woody tree, stem trees go away, regardless of whether we go with a living or a hybrid or whatever? And you recommend we do it all at once, so we should expect, if we go with any or all of these solutions, that at one day, we'll see a clearcutting and then start from scratch?
Unfortunately, yeah. The woody-stem trees will have to be clearcut and removed to install any of these options. There's no way we can go in there with a barge. It's not deep enough of a system. You can't barge up to the edge like you could on the road with Lewis Canal or the inland bay system or whatever. You just wouldn't be able to do that. So you have to clear to get access and work the earth and do your install. Now, it could be reforested. The living shoreline technology does open up opportunity with the Conservation District and other entities on living shoreline grants that are available. So there is, there is potential assistance through grant funding with the living shoreline technology.
And it is one of the grants that we're looking at for FEMA, because of the stormwater management responsibility. So it's on our list, and we needed this presentation to understand that that number needs to go up in that grant application. My question on this is, I mean, for me, this is the only option, is the third option.
I'm glad you said that.
I mean, I, I mean, I'd really suggest for everyone, this is the, this is the right way to go. Now, what could be done in the park to address the, the desert feel that it's going to have? So we have this beautiful park, everyone's loving the tree canopy. I understand and fully appreciate what you're saying. It's going to have to come down to get to the better place. We have to accept that. But what would you also recommend, because we've got significant habitat loss during this project, and it's going to be for years, what would you also recommend that we look at in that park to actually increase tree canopy or do what other things to balance out the loss that we'd be short, well, not even short-term creating? It would be years that there would be a change.
Well, yeah, I agree. You've got to lose the battle to win the war.
That's right.
And defoliating and taking away the woody-stem tree canopy would be devastating to all of us. But it's unavoidable in order to correct this problem. So the Delaware Forestry Division does also have grant funding. The city of Rehoboth took advantage of that on their Lake Girard system, and that was all reforested. So part of this is all that, you know, the driving force behind this is vegetation stabilization. And so immediately following the install of this would be a recommendation in the design parameters to install native beneficial woody-stem trees. And in a true conservation landscape plan, that would include a ground cover stabilization, perhaps showy wildflower grass mix for the upland stabilization with an understory shrub layer, southern bayberry, high-tide bush, red chokeberry, blue chokeberry. Then your understory woody-stem trees, eastern red cedar, and then your maples, and then your dominant canopy tree species, your oaks, your bald cypresses and things of that nature.
Exactly. And I think that point that you're saying is, when you do something like this, you actually, I mean, you'll have the devastation of all that tree loss, but you actually are putting in what can be very beautiful.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, so it's not as, it's not just like lawn and shrubs and a lot of poison ivy that's there now. You actually are creating, you're creating a pollinator place, you're, you're creating a increased habitat.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, completely increased, all done with native beneficial plants.
Exactly.
Selected for, to also offset that aesthetic degradation.
Right.
So a lot of our native beneficial plants that have a local fecundancy, they're, they're designed by the big guy in the sky to grow in this region.
Right.
And so you select from those species, and that's what would get installed.
I have a question.
You know, go ahead, Tim, and I have a question. Go ahead. You go first.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm really interested to learn more about the wave action that you've described.
Sure.
I think of the, the Blockhouse Pond as being fairly placid. I'm aware that on windy days, you can see more movement on the surface of the water. How much of the wave action is actually wind-driven versus that which is coming from runoff, coming from higher elevations or, you know, not already resting in that pond, but coming into that pond, draining into that pond? into that pond, draining into that pond?
Great question. Great point. So you have to remember that we don't have true lakes or ponds in the state of Delaware. We have created them all.
Yeah.
And so we've excavated down into a sandy loam soil that doesn't have really good soil structure. The cohesive nature of the soils there are not that strong.
Okay.
So when the water, you have an extreme environment where the water interfaces the upland.
Right.
And which causes those soils, that sandy cohesive, sandy loam soil, to disassociate. So even without wave action, you can have sloughing and sumping of those soils because the soil particles just break apart.
I see.
That gets exactly, that gets increased with wind-generated capillary wave action, just small little waves that constantly 24/7 nonstop interface and then reflect and pull that soil out. So it's 100% wind-driven. But even if there wasn't wind, it can still happen just because the water disassociates the soil structure.
The other question that I've wondered about is the water table. And I, do you have any handle on what the water table, how deep it is in that, in the area of that park? Because I think, and I don't even know what the depth of the pond is. I know in some areas, because I was involved in the art installation, the sculpture that was placed in the pond last spring, I know how shallow that particular area is, but I don't know about other areas of, you know, of the pond.
I don't have the exact.
And so my question is, are there springs feeding that pond from, you know, is it dug down into the water table?
Yeah, you do have groundwater discharge that occurs, so you have seeps. We don't necessarily have springs, but you have, you do have groundwater discharge into the system, other than sheet flow and stormwater effluent that comes into it. But the water level is controlled by the outfall structure.
Right.
The low float orifice of the outfall structure.
Yep.
And, but that does ebb and flow with drought and other things. When our groundwater table drops and we don't have any inputs, the water level drops significantly. But to the best of my recollection, your depth is about four and a half feet at the deepest part of the permanent pool.
Ah, four and a half.
Now, it has become much shallower over time because the soil that's eroding is being distributed out into the permanent pool.
Yeah.
So the bottom's coming to the top.
Yeah.
So I have a question for the, like, staff, I guess, is so, or, especially if you know this. So these are solutions, but I assume they haven't come with a plant, like, oh, this is what it would look like, and these are, because one of the comments I wanted to make is about, you mentioned fishing and such is the way that the pond is used. If we're going to go to a living shoreline, I think there's no defined areas where people fish now, for example. So it could, over time, get trampled. So I think one of the things that I would suggest, because I might not be here to help give this guidance, but there would be some good fishing, like, if you predetermined as part of this design and say, hey, we're going to have a small dock area, for example, a thing that got you out into the pond versus relying on people finding their fishing spot, I think it would more be a good addition to the amenity to get people a little farther out into the pond through vistas and pictures and otherwise, but also as a reminder, that's not an area you fish.
Right.
These are, these are the areas that you fish and that kind of thing. So two parts.
So in the existing conditions of the area around the pond, the shoreline, there's three distinct areas that you can see because they've just been trampled, the roots are exposed, and those are the three areas that are primarily fished. Previous commissioners for the Parks and Rec Commission for Great Marsh Park, or I'm sorry, George H.P. Smith Park, have wanted to design fishing platforms to keep people up off the banks, but we needed to get the banks solidified before we did that. So that would be another.
As part of the, okay.
It would be another project or included in this somehow.
So what you would say is if we said, hey, Tanyis, but we support the living shoreline, go with that, the next step would be for them to come back and say, here's what a plan would look like.
Correct.
Yeah, that's a great point because I believe the next slide gets into the steps. Actually, this is more design stuff. So if we go to the next, okay, here it is. You have prerequisites.
We have an April deadline for, well, I don't know. Now, the NOFO's been pulled from FEMA, so maybe they'll move that deadline where we can.
Yeah. Not to jump too far ahead, but to touch base on this point that was just brought out. Soft scape designated fishing areas can without doubt easily be incorporated into the final design of this. So that there are defined and identified fishing access areas throughout the, throughout the system.
And I have a question about, it's kind of like the Fisher Martin House conversation, which is, well, do you want to do it the right way or do you want to do it patch?
Sure.
Okay, not to, not to truncate that recommendation. Would you enlarge in this? And given this is a stormwater facility, and it has recreation obviously too, and it's a great natural habitat, would you look to say, if we're going to do this, let's make it larger? Like, what would you think is long-term the right answer for Louis on this?
Well, that's a great question and point too, but in doing any of these processes and removing the woody stem trees and bringing these slopes back to a three-to-one appropriate slope would make it larger in essence.
In just a fact that it's going to make it larger.
Yeah, it would appear to be much larger because now you're taking a vertical slope to this.
Right.
So it opens it up so much more. And in the design process, we would also be looking at taking erosive soils from the bench shelf of the pond and bringing them back up onto the slope. So actually acquiring some of the storage capacity of the basin back.
That would be completely.
Yeah. That was one of the questions I wondered about. Would it fan out a little bit? And the other issue is, the soil in that park is very soggy, and it seems to compact and push out. Okay, are we pushing soil toward the pond with the activities, some of the activities that are going on in that pond? Because if you notice around a lot of the trees, the root systems are pushed down, they're flattened down and compacted because of the activities, doesn't that push that soil? And would we have to have some kind of a perimeter around this thing to stop that kind of push of the soil toward the pond?
Well, gravity and water do play a role in this. You know, gravity is pulling soils down as the water breaks apart the soil structure. But none of the land activities or the mass of the trees are really forcing that soil in there. That's more of a function of water and gravity. Yeah, the activities in the park aren't really contributing to it as much as those variables are.
Yeah, thank you. In any part of your evaluation of the site, did you take into consideration any, if there are, and what the contribution would be of any drains from the, outside the park that might move water into that pond? Do we have, has that been part of your study at all?
Well, the only new input is from the elementary school, or the new school?
Right.
I think it's an elementary school. It's an elementary school.
Right.
Their stormwater drain inlet pipe was, was now, was installed so that all their impervious surface water runoff is diverted into Black House Pond now.
Right, and what I was thinking about also, possibility is the effect of water that drains from the BB property and from Savannah Road is higher than the pond, obviously.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's managed in any way coming off the, off the street, off Savannah or off the BB property into the pond. Has that, do you know if?
Those inputs have not caused any increase in erosion. This erosion was all occurring way before that storm, those new storm drain inlets were installed and so forth. So that's not really a driving factor. Remember, the outfall structure is what regulates how much water you have in there.
I understand.
An increase in hydrology into that system is not a bad thing. The more water that you have in the pond and the deeper the pond is, the easier it is to manage.
Sure. But, right, but of course, I'm thinking about what contaminants might be collected and moved from other sites into that pond.
Oh, that's what it's designed for, is to treat stormwater discharge contaminants. That's the purpose of the wet pond.
Right.
Is ecologically to break down nutrients, nitrogen, phosphorus, to retain silt and sediment in the system.
Right, but I mean, unless, unless you have an idea of what is being transported into that pond, unless that's been established, how do you know what materials you should be using as far as, you know, plants to help in that, in the system that you're trying to develop?
Well, that's all mathematically available anyway. Mathematically available, but also science, we know what's coming in. You know, you've got your pesticides, your herbicides, your fertilizers, whatever is land-based applied in the watershed, sheet flows or concentrated flows.
That would be part of the existing condition study.
Into that system, yeah. So none of those variables are going to have any detriment or impact or influence on restabilizing the shoreline. They're completely independent of each other. But we already know what comes in with the stormwater. Yeah, that wouldn't have any relevance to our plant stratum and so forth. That wouldn't impact it. Now, unless there was illicit discharge, now someone poured motor oil.
Right.
Down a storm drain or paint thinner down a storm drain, now, you know, that could be a problem, but we've got to leave all that to the side on this.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you for.
Do you think you would be changing the height of the outfall at all?
Negative.
You'd leave the outfall exactly where it is?
Yeah, we would be leaving the, every, all the infrastructure components would remain intact, and we'd be working around those structures.
To that point, has BPW been involved in this discussion or no, because none of their infrastructure is affected or?
It's not affected, right. I mean, they know about it in our grant meetings. We've been discussing this with GMB, but their infrastructure isn't. This is ours to deal with.
But this is, form is, is a stormwater feature, right? It's a function as a.
Right.
It's serving for water quantity/quality storage. It's a wet pond. Now, it doesn't fall under the purview of the Sussex Conservation District or DENREC as stormwater management facility.
It does not?
Because it predates their rules and regulations. So it's grandfathered out of the stormwater program.
Yeah.
But you, didn't you say earlier?
Otherwise, you may have had it fixed a long time ago.
Exactly.
But didn't you say, advise us earlier that, that there's a grant funding that would be available through Sussex?
Living shoreline grant.
For living shoreline, yeah, not for stormwater. This would be for living shoreline stabilization.
Yeah, but FEMA has some, so there are many, there are many grant sources for different ways. So one other question I just had for, kind of as the public as we go through this, and I do think, Elmer and Janet, when we look at this grant, we need to add a little more on public education so people would, I mean, because this is, would be a dramatic change. But my question is, the park is used for lots of other activities, Juneteenth, farmer's market. Should this project move forward, can it be contained so that the other parts of the park, I assume, can still function?
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
Staging could take place so that we could accommodate any.
We can accommodate all the activity in the park.
Any other activities, yeah. All that staging could be put into a scope of work with staging activity to accommodate any of these functions. There might have to be some movement of things.
Yeah.
But that's all easily managed.
Okay, all right. This is what University of Delaware was looking for in their meetings.
Yeah.
This is terrific.
I think too, there's a current pathway around the pond, and we've discussed the need, we Parks and Rec Commission have discussed the need to bring that pathway up to ADA compliance. And there is a section on the side of the pond that is closest to the BB parking lot where it's a pretty thin section. So with that three-to-one grading, I don't know what that impact is going to be on the path around the park.
I would even suggest that the idea of improving that path would be put off until this, all this construction is done.
But it's another project to consider.
Yeah, it goes like this with the tree roots and such.
Yeah, if I may, just to continue on, so we give as much information today as we can.
Please.
Really appreciate it.
prerequisites, obviously, we needed the deeds. Before I even went to do this, it's always important on my end to make sure I know who really owns it. Sometimes I, you know, maybe 20 years ago, not so much anymore, I've learned over time that you don't go start doing studies and everything until you know who really owns the system. So we got the deeds, and that was then kosher for me to go and start talking about something. An existing condition study with my existing, my existing condition studies have been very generalized. This hasn't been measuring and setting parameters and putting engineering together on paper. This has been, you know, just rudimentary, you know, you've got about three feet of scouring here, this bank has collapsed and so forth. Soil density testing at the base of the slope to determine what exactly the best of those three options would be. And if we were to hybridize those options, so we want to make sure we've got good, sound, compacted soils at the bottom to work with. We would have to follow State of Delaware Pond Code. So there would have to be a three-to-one slope with at least a 10-foot safety bench around the pond. Now, that occurs naturally now because of the soil that has eroded had created a bench shelf.
Right.
But when we do this work, we have to have a defined 10-foot safety bench going out to the permanent pool. So we've got to follow Delaware Pond Code 378. Jurisdictional determination application. We do have to go through the State of Delaware Wetlands Section and the Army Corps of Engineers to determine whether they're taking jurisdiction of this system, and that's an application that we submit to the Corps and to DENREC for their regulators to come and say, hey, this is really an isolated, plustern system, doesn't have direct connect to any title tributaries, we're taking, we're not taking jurisdiction, or it could be the opposite. We're taking jurisdiction of this.
And if they take jurisdiction, does that mean responsibility in the form of funding?
No, that doesn't mean any of that.
It means that.
I'm sorry.
I was listening.
Yeah, wait. But taking jurisdiction would simply mean before any of this activity to restore and correct efficiencies occurs, you would have, if it's the Corps, you would have to submit a nationwide permit for.
Yeah, it looks like they're changing all the 404 rules, so.
Yeah.
You're absolutely correct, but it may not be.
We would submit a nationwide permit for shoreline, they have a nationwide permit just for shoreline stabilization, and that's all we're doing here. And the State of Delaware, if the Wetlands Section were to take jurisdiction of it, which I doubt, but I can speak for them, the same thing, we would have to submit a Subakwesland Wetland Impact Permit Application for Living Shoreline Stabilization. But the designs would have to be done first.
Right.
Deeds, designs, then a joint process hearing with both agencies if indeed they were to take jurisdiction. But that process with this kind of a high-profile job is paramount to get a jurisdictional determination done in advance.
How long is the total process, you think, Todd? If we were to say, like, if June, the council were to say, oh, we want to do this, like, how much longer, like, not till the tree's growing, but until you're saying, hey, we walk away and?
Well, that's a great question because the permit, if one of these agencies were to take jurisdiction, the Corps could be up to 90 days. DENREC, I can't even answer that because we're waiting on permits that we've submitted for three years ago. And so being a municipality with maybe a little more political push and pull, this could happen faster in terms of permitting than.
Don't count on it.
Say, yeah, yeah, right, yeah. But so that's a question. It could be up to 90 days for permits if indeed jurisdictional determinations were to take place in securing your funding, but to begin the project, you know, that could happen relatively, you know, almost within months of an approval of a total project.
Is anything seasonal with regard to the project?
Not necessarily because this is obviously a tourist town. This type of work would be best served to do in the winter months. So in the winter months, in terms of, you know, like even the tree removal will be best in the winter months because you've just got less biomass to deal with.
Right.
Less stressors, heat, jiggers, ticks, whatever it might be.
Right.
All kinds of different things, less people in the way.
I have a question that's in the kind of, in the weeds. Would you actually end up draining the pond to be, you would?
We would have to, not all the way. We would have to de-water the pond down.
De-water.
Yeah, de-water it down to a certain elevation so that we can access the permanent pool zone and that bench shelf.
Bring your watering cans, people.
Yeah, and de-water it down to a point where we're trying to preserve the fin fishery.
I see.
Yeah, to save the fish and amphibians and so forth, to keep some of the ecology alive there.
So if we could add this to a council meeting.
I agree, yeah.
And we also have a time issue if FEMA's process continues on the grant process so that we could really, I wouldn't, you know, just personally, I wouldn't be wanting to spend any more time on option one or two. spend any more time on option one or two. So if for chance we go with three, then that's the conceptual study that we would put into the application. And that's still another 20 months before FEMA would probably answer. So that, I would say, but those grants, if they stay on schedule, would be due in about six weeks. That's a big if on that schedule. So, so a timely decision and guidance would help University of Delaware, who's actually writing that grant for us.
I agree, I think with that, next, Janet.
Yeah, I think a critical component of that grant submission though is the pre-done design.
Absolutely, yeah.
Now, unfortunately.
So I think that's what we'd be voting on, right? You're suggesting voting on authorizing a next stage of design.
And, and limiting that to option three.
And have you submitted a proposal for that?
I have not been requested to submit that yet, but I'd be willing to do that now. Fortunately.
I wouldn't get started, I think what you're, what you're proposing is have council vote to execute the design stage.
Right. And then, and then we can request that quote from you, which we then can, GMB and University of Delaware can add to the grant application.
Agreed.
How long would it take you to get a proposal together?
I could have it done by the end of the day if I had to.
So you're actually there too, huh?
The irony of this, I'm leaving here and I'm driving into Richmond to the International Erosion Control Association.
Sounds like exciting.
Well, to me it is. It might not be to the regular layperson. To me it is. This is their big symposium and I may find new technologies there.
I was going to say, I don't know if you heard Rob's pitch, but he's got some autonomous cameras up there at the University of Delaware that he could throw in the truck.
Yeah, right. Fortunately for this project, the engineering is already done. We don't have to solicit engineering.
Okay.
The engineering is already done and approved by DENREC.
By DENREC because it's.
In the sediment erosion control handbook because the Filtrix Living Shoreline Systems, which are amazing, we've used them in many jobs in the region.
It's kind of pre-approved as a template.
It's pre-approved.
Great.
All the cut sheets are done. So we just extrapolate that cut sheet to the site.
Right, that's great.
Yep.
So, yeah, I think that's enough. So we've got two on Fish Mart and then this one as well for next agenda items.
I'm not sure if there's another slide. Deeds, yeah, we showed the deeds, we got those in line. Let's see. Soil density studies, we talked about all these pretty much, the applications. This is the implementation, you know, obviously to environmentally engineer the design, apply for the necessary permits, woody stem tree removal, install the BMP, whatever best practice we choose. Obviously, the living shoreline has already been the, the main focus here, so that would, that would be number four. Five is to fill and compact the areas. You know, so these are the, the scope of work, just generalized.
It would be good too, as we go forward, this is the inventory, the number of trees so that you could replace them somewhere else in the interim. So you weren't losing your tree, your tree count there anymore.
We don't lose any tree count, right, exactly. Thank you, Mayor.
I don't know if the city owns any properties with wood stoves or fireplaces, but there would be a lot of available, well, actually, some of the wood could be timbered.
It could be timbered.
Some of the wood is mature enough to be timbered and could be used in.
Timbered and mulled. No, that's a really interesting one.
There are a couple of trees over there that are kind of unique. I know people are aware of them.
Beautiful specimens.
One is huge. The birds come in and nest in it in the fall. And the other one is a bald cypress that is coming up. Would it be possible that any of those grander trees could be somehow salvaged?
It is possible, but very difficult because if you don't have 100% access around the perimeter, it's very difficult to get an excavator on an angle and pull soils unless you're pulling them right to your, you know, straight. So it's possible that we could red flag some of the tree species.
You could tag some, but it would not be a guarantee, absolutely.
Wouldn't be a guarantee.
Because it's not until you actually are there on the ground doing it whether you can feel like you can.
Yeah, one of the other problems too is root intrusion. As the root, as the roots grow and develop, they do, they migrate toward the water. And as they grow and develop, they disassociate soils. And so removing them may be paramount in order to do the job so that those roots aren't interfering with the project. Yeah, it's, it wouldn't be not, it wouldn't be a goal of mine or anyone in my field to remove these trees, but it's inevitable. It's a shame.
You use the good analogy for, lose the battle to win the war sometimes, right?
That's right. Exactly, yeah.
Well, Todd, I appreciate you coming in and all your work over the years for us. And we'll, our next meeting is the 10th, so we're likely to make a recommendation or not that night around whether to move to the next stage, which would be assumed like a design phase.
Very good. I'll be on standby.
Thank you very much.
If you need anything in the meantime, now to get ahold of me.
Enjoy your, enjoy your conference.
Appreciate it.
Okay. So now we are in a committee, commission overview and update. So this is a recent thing where we have different committees come up and give updates. We had H Park last week, which gave a great update on their user guide. And so today, we have Mary, we thank her for your patience in finally getting the opportunity. Limber up, you know, get those knees moving. And then she'll give us an update on what.
Do you like a seventh inning stretch, anything?
The bike is bad. Committee has been working on and what's on in your pipeline. Thanks for coming, Mary.
Absolutely. It works, it's good for my patients. It is. Hang on, I sprung it on blue, so. And I was given a five to seven-minute timeline, so if I get a little crazy and go overboard, just get the hook and send me away. I'm fine with that. Whoops. Hang on. There we go. So this is Lewis Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Something I said, Joe?
He doesn't feel about it.
Supporting 100%. You're doing great work here.
So I am Mary Roth, current Chair of the committee. So do you want me to use this thing blue or can you? There we go, thank you. For those folks, I know I'm making this presentation to folks that know, but for anybody else, we are not a regulatory committee. We make recommendations to council staff and other city committees. We are a six-person committee at the moment. We have one open position and we do anticipate filling that position very soon. Deputy Mayor Saliba is our ex officio from council and Julia Kirsch is our ex officio from staff. And I just want to acknowledge the great work that she does because she's a tremendous support to us. So all who, when we worked with others to develop the Lewis Bike Plan in 2024, our committee came away with it with a vision and goals. And we feel that that vision and those goals work well for all the work that we do. So not a big fan of reading to people, but we are pretty, we do like this vision and so I will share it for folks, which is all who live in, work in, or visit our city will have access to a bicycle and pedestrian network that is safe and comfortable for all ages and abilities, is clearly identified, and provides amenities throughout, encouraging its use. The network will provide connections to popular destinations within and outside of city limits, resulting in a thriving, healthy community. So some of our goals that we have are to develop a continuous, safe, low-stress bike and pedestrian network that encourages more biking and walking and less driving in town. To provide adequate and secure bike parking and pedestrian amenities at all major trip destinations, including but not limited to all public parks. To ensure safety for Peds and bicyclists is incorporated into all discussions related to design, maintenance, enforcement on all city and state-maintained roads. To promote a commitment to prioritizing bicycle and pedestrian safety initiatives in all aspects of city government, including city committees. To continuously improve bike and pedestrian safety through education programs, outreach, and to monitor the use of pedestrian and bicycle facilities across the board.
On this slide, are there current parks that you've already sort of identified as being deficient for like bike?
We haven't necessarily determined any to be deficient, but as you'll hear a little bit further on, because we do not have a regulatory power, collaboration with others is really important. And we've begun a little bit of that collaboration, but something I'm asking for today that you'll see as we go along is how we help improve that collaboration. The good news is, I'm only asking for collaboration, the two people in front of me ask for money, so. I think I'm like the positive at the medal.
Completely.
Blue.
You're the positive today.
So just a few things to share. In cooperation with the city, the public and DelDOT, we developed the Lewis Bike Plan in 24. That plan includes infrastructure and program recommendations. We have not excluded Maron City Council or anybody from going over that plan and talking through our recommendations. Where we are right now is we have, we have prioritized infrastructure pieces of it. We have prioritized the program recommendations. And now we're working through developing what those specific program recommendations are. When we're done with that, we'll bring it forward so you all folks can see exactly what we're recommending as the plan altogether. So we're on our way there, we're just not there yet. As a committee, we've updated our bylaws. We've increased our committee membership. We were a committee of five in hopes of getting some things done and none of us going to FOIA jail. We've increased our committee membership to seven. And as you know, we're one short, which we hope to fill. The committee used to meet every other month and not in the summer. We've changed that meeting schedule to be monthly year-round. We have a lot of work to do and we want to stay on it. Increased collaboration, some of that we've started and we want to continue to improve that. With Blue's great help, we've enhanced the city webpage and it speaks more to bicycle and pedestrian safety and, and other aspects. We, as the committee and have for many years, creates and distributes the print map. We've worked very hard to add a digital piece to that. We've reduced the number of print maps probably by about 50%. Would like to keep at that. Have added QR codes to the bike racks and other places and trying to promote that. To give you an example, the city website has a Google map that's on there now that one of our members created that identifies bike racks and some other amenities and pieces around town. That was launched June of last year and as of this week, it's got just shy of 13,000 hits. So we think, you know, for so many folks that are out and about using their phone or whatever, we're trying to make it easier for them. And the committee charge, what we consider your charge to us, was last updated in 2010, so we figured maybe it could use a little updating. We're drafting that update and then we'll share with you all for, we want to make sure we're on the same page and that we're doing what you hope we are doing and moving forward. So, oh, really small print for folks. So how are we going to achieve these goals we talked about? We kind of put them in three different budget buckets.
Well, you said budget, I heard you.
I know, I was just going to ask for money. Bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure improvements. So that's again, think back, all of this is about collaboration. So that's intersection improvements, that's traffic calming, bike lanes, crosswalk additions and improvements to improve safety, sidewalk improvements and additions to improve access and safe passage. Bike and pedestrian amenities, what are they? They are bike racks, they are benches, they are signage, they are fix-it stations, map holders, water bottle filling stations, you name it. The education and public engagement, our education programs and outreach, some of that includes the school, which you'll see when we make our presentation, the digital maps and the website, wayfinding signage, we can't expect folks to get around if they don't have some sense of where they're going and what's the safest route in order to do that. Gathering data and feedback from the public and understanding where they stand and what improvements we need to make. There has been a conversation and it is in the Bike Plan about a future bicycle ambassador program. And it absolutely is something that's on our radar. But for anybody that has ever developed and introduced a program, you know you've got to do all your homework well in advance because otherwise it can be great for one season and then fall apart. So we're going to do our homework and our due diligence long before that is ever introduced. And then the collaboration piece, my word of the day, is engagement in all city projects with bicycle and pedestrian components. We'd like to bring our expertise to the table. Blue, thanks. So, talking about collaboration, some of it has already happened and we're really happy about that. From an information sharing standpoint, I was included in a meeting for the city's capital improvement plan. For anybody that wants to talk about infrastructure changes, there is no better time to want to do something with infrastructure than when a project is already getting ready to go. When you're budgeting it, when you're talking about public outreach, if there's anything you want to do. So us being able to see how some infrastructure project we might have or might be in the plan can fall into something three or four years out in the city's capital improvement plan is really helpful. Grant submissions, we've been able to participate in grant submissions before they go in and that's been super helpful. We had parking enforcement come to one of our meetings to share with us kind of firsthand what they're hearing from folks, which is interesting and not something you might want to repeat, mixed company sometimes. But it was nice to hear directly from them, some of the challenges that they have with bikes and Peds and also with the general public. And then Parks and Rec, we were able to participate when Parks and Rec did their long and short-term plan. We submitted a number of recommendations to them. We happen to think they were good, but we're hoping that as they go through their process that that might be something we can work with them in the future. Some of that collaboration has been like, we were out at George H. P. Smith Park because they talked about adding a bike rack out there and they brought us into it. We also hear, it's helpful for us to hear from those folks where they'd like a bike rack to be offered to folks, but also the park commissioners don't really have any issue with folks leaning their bikes up against the playground fence and all that. So it's nice to have that broader view, to hear the give and take. Just had the same conversation with Rodney out at Canalfront Park and what that might look like and if folks are putting their, you know, bikes on the ground near the tennis courts, how does he feel about that? So we've kind of started that collaboration, which is great, and we're really very thankful for that. How to increase that and use our expertise, I happen to think we have a really great committee with a lot of expertise and we'd like to share that with folks. So, A, a couple of examples where the park, when development reviews take place, we'd like to somehow engage our expertise in that. Best interest of bikes and Peds are in our city code or in all the different things that we do. That's kind of some of the stuff that we've not touched on, but we'd like to do that. We also understand that we're not looking to add any more burden to city staff or anybody else. That isn't our intention. But our committees are siloed and there is some overlap. And we'd really like to work together, that, which I may not get right, but sort of the rising tide, all boats kind of thing, if we could come together for collective goals and objectives.
Good point. I think it would be good maybe to have like a chair, like a semi-regular meeting of the chairs of the different committees so that you could see where there's synergies and such. That's a great idea.
I think it would be and it would allow us to reduce some of that overlap, make sure, it would also, it would be messy in the beginning.
Can they avoid FOIA that way, Alex? I mean, they're, they're different singular members from committees. Can they, does he?
Probably be a new subcommittee.
Oh, well.
Yeah, I mean, it would bring broader views, different opinions. It'd be messy to start with, but I think maybe we could figure it out and make it happen. So I think that's really it for me. I think I kept my time. I'm happy to answer any questions, but.
I just want to make a comment because, Mary, you've done such a great job, I mean, in your committee and for any of us who have sat in and watched your deliberations, but also I would just say, you know, we so valued you being part of the CIP. We've already worked on some grants together. Hopefully the funding for Safe Street for All that we've won will come in. But I just want to thank you for your personal time because you have made the grant process so much easier because of the information you have and your willingness to just write sections, roll up your sleeves and help out. So thank you very much for that effort.
And the relationship with Dell that you've got with the knowledge of the folks and how to work the silos at DelDOT too is valuable. It's like, you know, having a translator.
But I liked your comment about, and so, Janelle, I'm thinking about in planning reviews, you know, when, when a developer presents the bike path or. reviews, you know, when a developer presents the bike path or whatever.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, I thought that we discussed doing that at one point, was getting their insights on, yeah, like you said. The other one I was thinking is that if we're going to have a local marker program is, okay, if we intend those things to be walkable or bikeable, you know, those would be another. And then obviously we just talked about the refurbishment of Block House and the path around there, you know, that's another great example of how to, you know, tie you in when we start thinking about refurbishing that.
Yeah, I think that's what we want folks to think about. When you think about a network, a network isn't just trails connecting to something like that. It's, you know, your on-street network, it's your sidewalks, and then it's the park system and how those networks connect the park systems to each other. Yeah.
Yeah, then have you, I know that Janet was proposing, which I think we were going to take up one of them, is the watering stations, is that, did you guys have a chance to look at that and give recommendations on, hey, if Lewis were to put, you know, watering stations around the city, these, you know, these would be good areas or distances apart, that kind of?
I wasn't aware, no.
Okay. Well, we've got one because we had ARPA money.
Water bottle filling stations.
Yeah, so we're putting one in because we don't have any, like, this would be a new thing, so we had ARPA money, so we figured rather than put it in all six, so that might not be another example where we say, hey, let's turn that to the bike and Peds, again, distance-wise, location-wise.
Yeah, we'd be happy to. I know we have one out at the trailhead.
Yeah. I really like what you said there and a great idea about minimizing the siloing is to maybe have just the chairs occasionally meet and say, hey, we're working on this and that. Because I think you guys have even done public arts inter collaborations and stuff.
We did, we did.
Yeah, you guys are very active with, and the African-American Heritage Commission has also been active, you know, I call it cross-pollinating, working with other committees, it's good, it's healthy.
Well, and I think we, we all are looking out for the great or good, it's just how we figure out how to work together. And also, we all have so much to do, that if there's overlap, happy to give it up.
Well, yeah, exactly, hand it over, hand it over the fence.
Happy to do that.
I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mary, I attended your meeting, your most recent meeting, and I was really, really pleased to hear the comment, the suggestion that this idea of building on collaboration and your, the committee's participation in the whole plan review process that we currently Do you have the sense that your committee members are committed to that, that they would support that participating in plan review?
I think that they would, yes, and they're supportive of it. I think there's an education piece to it.
Sure.
So that we don't give Janelle gray hair.
Nothing's wrong with gray hair.
No, I think that, because some of us have spent more time in plan reviews than others. And I think that if there was a way, because Parks and Rec are a part of that too, so we don't want to make this uber, you know.
Right, and there needs to be education on their side too, as they relate to.
Right, we don't want to make it uber cumbersome. So I think there's a bit of an education piece, but there is a way and however, we can kind of make that work.
Excellent, thank you.
And Mary, the other thing, and I know Rich is here, Janelle and Rich and Melanie Mosley, the Planning Commission has the responsibility, a heavy lift with the redo of the comp plan. And so I know that that's something specific that we, the Planning Commission has talked about reaching out to the committees for chapter writing.
Absolutely, we would love that.
And that may be one of the first purposes of the chairs getting together, because there's actually a deliverable that the city owes. So that's a very tangible thing that might get everybody together.
Absolutely. Some of the goals we pulled to specifically speak to some of the comp plan things, the existing comp plan, so we'd be happy to help, yes.
Excellent.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, appreciate it.
Okay, moving right along, and by the way, we're down to a quorum, so.
We're not leaving.
Yeah, we're in.
We're in.
So, Janelle, who's going to take us through, just some updates on, yeah, just run us through some conditional use, public notice and meadows, and because we don't have our, we won't deliberate too much on.
No, Tim is just getting snacks, he's not leaving us.
And Tim was part of the conversations for two of these, actually all of these, as he, as the secretary attends the Planning Commission meetings. So Planning Commission has asked staff to look at some changes that, you know, just code fixes, you know, where we need to fix it. One of them is the conditional use requirement, that it, the proposal is, it runs with the use. So as long as the use is there, you don't have to come back and ask for the annual renewal. Because again, I don't know how often a cell tower is going to be removed.
Good point.
But that doesn't prohibit Mayor and Council going, hey, maybe we do want to see it back in like five years, just to see how it's doing. You can set it, but it's not a requirement and it's just easier for everybody to follow through. The second one is the public notice. There was never an intention, right now it says anytime an application is on a Planning Commission or Mayor or Council agenda, it requires public notice. That was not the intent. The intent is you do public notice for public hearings. So like, if you're going to schedule, like, the Planning Commission's going to schedule a public hearing, they would have had to do public notice. That is not the intent of the code, that was never the intent. Instead of, it got, when the ordinance was written, it got meeting instead of hearing. So this just takes it back to, when there's a public hearing, public notice is completed, which is the legal ad, the posting of the signs, the letters to the property owners within so many, I think it's 200 feet. And this is making sure that the public notice requirement and the conditional use section of the code and the, in Chapter 170 are the same requirements and the same verbiage. So you're going to see that both in the same. And it's really, because again, the original public notice requirement was before the new subdivision code was amended, was you got your public notice done when you submitted your application, you're months before you get to a public hearing. So it's making sure when the public hearing, because we don't want to confuse the public, because it's happened, they'll show up and all the Planning Commission doing is scheduling the public hearing.
Right.
And they're thinking, this is the time for the public hearing, and it's not.
Fair enough. On the, while we're on notice, so the 200 feet, that aspect where the neighbors get in, is that true if they're even outside the city? So if someone is 200 feet and they're a county resident, they would still get mailed a notice, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yes, it's from the very edge of the property. So everybody, city, not city, you're getting notified.
Okay.
So those are, that's the one that actually will be coming to you to schedule a public hearing, to consider those changes. The other one is, the Environmental Subcommittee has been looking at meadows. Right now, if you have pretty grasses or plants or flowers that are more than 10 inches in height.
They're going to send a letter saying, go cut them.
Correct. So the Environmental Subcommittee has drafted an ordinance to say, hey, meadows, they're good for the pollinator, for the bees, the butterflies. So allowing a meadow to be taller than the 10 inches and it's defined as to what it is and other things. So that's going to go back to Planning Commission just to get a full recommendation, even though it's not in Chapter 170, but to go back just to make sure they were comfortable with it, they really liked the idea. So you will also be seeing that in the future.
Where is the conditional use at its stage, the conditional use requirements? Has that been blessed by the Planning Commission?
Yes, the public hearing notice and the conditional use have been both recommended approval unanimously by the Planning Commission to Mayor and Council.
Okay, and approval, what you're saying is, it runs with the use, but there is a five-year, or is that not yet in the?
That's, you don't actually need to put that in there, it's just, it's a condition you have the ability to place on an application.
But it's not in what's proposed?
Correct.
Or vetted by the Planning Commission.
No, I just wanted to make sure you were aware that as a condition and a conditional use, you have that ability to do that if you want to see something come back.
So that would be like a best practice.
It could be.
Yeah.
Again, you know.
That's a song, Kottown.
I think, yeah, or the BB hospital, I'm like, so BB doesn't have to come every year for the offices.
Yeah.
It just stays with the land. But if you have something that's contentious, that it's like, hey, maybe we do need to see this, you know, you have that option because you can place that condition on it.
Yeah, no, I like that, first of all, it does go with the land and it is, it's a silly waste of time for everybody's part to keep coming in. But I do like the idea that you would say in that conditional use, should you have significant change or whatever the proper language is, you'd need to alert. And every five years, we would just like a check-in with you. That doesn't seem onerous to Council or to the property.
And that's up to Mayor and Council if you want to see that. And you don't have to put that on every application, it's just, maybe you have one that's contentious that it's like, maybe you do need to see every year. Because I've had that in the past where there was a conditional use and it's like, it ended up, the city, that city had to revoke that conditional use. Because they couldn't comply.
Right.
So.
Are we losing any significant fees by saying you don't need to come in every year? Is there even a fee associated?
There's no fee associated with this. It's just time for, yes, so those are the three, right now, there will be more coming, little code changes here and there, just to kind of make sure we're keeping up.
I really appreciate you doing that, yeah, it's important not just to work on new stuff, but to go back and see what's not working anymore.
I wish so.
Okay, well, let's open that up. Anyone questions on that, going once, twice? Okay, next. This one I do feel, I was going to ask Alex on this one, so tomorrow, we have a fairly broad agenda and one of them is revenue sources. I know that we have this labeled here as the presentation of draft ordinances and resiliency fund and gross receipts rental, which have to do in some regards, so my question to you is this, is it okay to have this presented and then take this back up tomorrow when our other two colleagues are here? Because frankly, I'm a lame duck and these two, you know, so the reality of discussing this is not really fruitful. So is it okay to put?
That's fine, yeah, you can do that.
We can have these discussed tomorrow?
Uh huh, yeah, you can do that because the general heading of budget discussion, these fall under that and FOIA requires just a general description of what you're talking about.
Okay, so let's do that, let's receive what is the proposed ordinances?
Yep.
And then we can say, oh, we've received the ordinances now, let's discuss them tomorrow.
Yep.
And that'll give us that avenue. Okay, so, Janelle, are you, or who wants to guess, did you write these or?
I didn't.
No, okay. Did you? Do you mind? Go ahead, Alex.
Absolutely, so there's two ordinances here, it can be collapsed down into one ordinance if you prefer. Let me just get my notes here. Some of these. Okay, so the first one, the lodging tax draft ordinance. Yeah, absolutely. So the first ordinance, the lodging tax ordinance, this is a power that's under the charter, the city's allowed to, under the current charter language, impose up to a 3% lodging tax on hotels and motels. Currently, there's no lodging tax and this proposal is pretty simple, it's just a 2% lodging tax effective April 1st. So this would not affect any contracts that are executed prior to April 1st.
So what you're saying is that the code allows us to do an up to.
Yep.
But we need an ordinance that's very specific as to the rate, so we can't say, oh, again, we're going to have an ordinance that allows us up to, we have to say one and a half or 2% or?
Exactly, the charter allows the Council to adopt an ordinance with a specific.
Specific amount, okay, thank you for that clarification. And we're, and we're proposing to, based on just the revenue, it just matches our, to make a balanced budget, basically.
That's exactly right, that's the goal, but not implemented.
Not implemented until the following year.
Correct, so that that industry has.
So this allows them to get their rate cards or whatever.
Exactly, and just to, their promotions and all those kinds of activities, but you're absolutely right, Andrew, that it's really just saying, we're keeping an even, even though we don't get the 8%, that the state gets.
Sure. It's an equity. You want an equity, here you go.
That's exactly right, right.
All right, thank you for that, Alex. So that's what we'll be discussing tomorrow is basically whether we're comfortable with the 2% or whether we want to do anything or whether, yeah.
Correct.
All right. And so the resiliency, so Amy presented to us a framework, so what this is, is what, a resolution basically to enact whatever frameworks available, so that's what this resolution says.
That's right, and before we jump to that one, it might make sense to discuss the gross receipts.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, say on that one.
This is not for hotels, this is for residential dwellings, short-term rentals and long-term rentals taxed.
Short and long?
Yes.
Short and long.
So the proposal that I was asked to draft was a 5.5% tax for short-term rentals and a 5% tax for long-term rentals.
So long-term would stay the same?
Yeah, long-term stays the same.
But short-term is 5.5?
Correct.
No, it's generally.
Okay. So this, so Alex, just also for clarification, this is not though, yet touching on the idea that we were going to implement a commercial rental tax, is it?
It's not.
Residential only.
This is residential only.
This is just addresses an additional half percent on the short-term in reality.
This is the same form of tax that has been on the books for years, just a different rate for short-term.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. All right, and then the resiliency fund, is there any, is the resolution pretty straightforward, just says you're adopting the attached framework? Okay.
And I just want to clarify, that version 2.1.
Right.
Is the last version I'm going to do with individual edits from Council, okay, because then we'll do it as a group.
Sure, yeah, 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 no, appreciate it.
And that came out yesterday.
It came out last night.
Last night.
So for the community, I don't think it'll take us long tomorrow to talk about the receipts rental tax, lodging tax, the resiliency fund, we might take a little bit more time just because as Councilperson Roscoe said, there were some edits to that, so as a body, and that's why I didn't want to take that up today because we should have shorthanded today. So with that, I will, I hope Terry didn't stay to make his second public comment, we weighted him out. But there are others that have, I don't see, man, we even waited out the virtual people. It's okay, I still don't think, you know, three hours to get this much content done is well, time well spent, at least it's not 11 o'clock at night.
And Ellen, the version 2.1 of the resiliency fund will be up for the public, because the changes mostly are minor, but there's some, there's some pieces of that, that, you know, changes like the access amount and I wrote a lot more lockbox guarantees on it based on Council's, so.
I'll make sure it's attached.
I want to make sure it's attached, everyone sees that.
Any other, Rich, come on up.
Just one, very short comment on the resiliency fund. Yesterday, a couple of us from the Planning Commission got to go to a training that, thanks to Janelle, up in Dover. And one of the things that came out there is that Lewis really is regarded as a leader in the state of Delaware. And this is, this is an example, I held this actually out as an example of something that communities need to be thinking about, especially with federal grants that normally are, you know, the bedrock of resiliency and of responding to disasters, with that foundation being very much under question right now, with the President of the United States saying that he wants to get rid of FEMA, for example. With NOAA, we heard from Rob earlier about NOAA grants, which I know are very much under threat right now, et cetera. Anyway, as I've gotten to review several drafts now of the resiliency fund, I think it has improved and I would just heartily, and I know, I know it's tough fiscal times, I know it, I know it is, but this is a, in my view, just a very high priority for the city to tuck away this fund for what we know is coming. And I think it's a really a good product. It'll get better, but I think it's really well-crafted and well-thought-out. So let's continue to be a leader.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Rich.
And I will, just to kind of piggyback on Rich, it was interesting how the agenda laid out today because we saw the cost of what happens when you don't maintain and put off things and then what you have finally come to a reckoning, as we saw that with the Fisher Martin House and the Block House Pond, so.
Yeah.
And so it's a good point that you make, is one, if we put these things off, the more expensive and difficult they'll become. And then when you do, by having a resiliency fund, you know, if we have opportunities, someone, Joe whispered in my ears, this, could Block House be a resiliency project? Potentially it could, it's a stormwater management facility, so these types of things, if you have funding there, you know, so I just thought it was, you know, very themed out today. We talked on home businesses and then we had, you know, more mature entrepreneurial efforts. So, you know, today just represents where the city of Lewis has been in a sense and where we can go if we're proactive about things. So I'll just make that connection and then, Bill, I don't see any other hands up, so I'll leave the last word to you. Or whoever answers you.
So this is a public comment, we don't have to.
Going all the way back to the home-based businesses. So, twofold question here. With ADUs now legal, is it possible that somebody could run a business out of an ADU and the main house? Is it possible there could be two businesses on one property?
If the framework is approved, it would be based on the percent, as Councilperson If the framework is approved, it would be based on the percent, as Councilperson Richard pointed out, if the ADU is 900 square feet, they would have 90 feet that they could devote to it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
That might be a massage table.
And on the other side of the coin, with developments like Dutchman's Harvest and possibly Overfall Preserve with townhomes that have shared walls, you know, the whole impetus for this whole, this whole discussion has been the fact that those folks live in a row home. And now with more shared wall communities coming, you know, what, what are...
One of the things I asked was HOA, so typically like in a condo, I think you might live in a condo association, then you'd have the body of that private community would be able to dictate, hey, we do or we don't want it, or we can allow X number, there's a sort of their own subset of rules there. The difficult part becomes, and other residents have talked to me about this, a lot of Lewis is not under an HOA. So there are, you know, there are rohos, rohos on McPhee Street that I live next to and there are, you know, older, so that, that's where you lose that, you know, you want to call it protection, but in terms of your direct, around new ones that are coming up, the condo association would have the ability, I would assume, to, you know, regulate that.
Or the HOA. But those documents, of course, are typically created by the developer and they are put in place before, you know, sales even start occurring. In fact, they have to be provided prior to sales. So then it, then it takes the membership to actually modify, change those HOAs, so, a little, so, yeah.
But I mean, that ordinance just doesn't directly in so many words address the shared wall issue, you know, on, on the other, non-actual streets, so...
Not in its current form.
Not in its current form, so I just wondered if you had any ideas on, on how you might address that, which is really the, what started this all.
Well, the one that Kevin brought up was the idea that the, and I, you know, it was, there wasn't much support for it, but, I mean, from the audience, but the idea that you would have an application process that involved telling your neighbors. I think that's what that is designed for, is if I'm in that situation, then I'm going to go ask my neighbors for permission, so to speak.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Dennis?
Anyone else?
Might get a question for Alex. If city passes an ordinance limiting home, home stuff, can a covenant and a HOA be more restrictive than a city ordinance?
So it depends, it depends on what the exact covenant is. Generally, they need, need to be consistent and they can be stricter.
They can be strict, more strict? Let's say that the city council that passes an ordinance regarding home businesses and then a covenant and a HOA can be more restrictive?
Depending on what the ordinance says and what is adopted first, so it depends on the situation, but generally, yeah.
A good example is fences. Most HOAs say you can only have a maximum fence height of four feet. Well, the city allows six and then up to eight. We do not enforce, the city does not enforce the four-foot height fence. That is the responsibility of the homeowner in the HOA.